Welcome, welcome to the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Board. We'll do a roll call. Gloria, please. Madam Chair.
Present.
Vice Chair Federy.
Present.
The Secretary is here. Board Member Catalinato.
Present.
Board Member Mutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham.
Present.
We have a quorum in a full board.
Wonderful.
Please join in for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gloria, minutes, I know, right?
Yes, we have August twenty-fourth.
August twenty-fourth. Motion by Dennis. Second. Somebody, who said second? Oh, Craig. Craig, all in favor? No. Noes extension, seven in favor. Okay, we're going to close out this session and go into a work session with the Connor Friedlander Gateway One. And just identify yourselves to the record.
Gregory Connor.
Greg.
And Amanda Johnson with Aris Design. So, just want to summarize, back in May of last year, the Planning Board adopted a pre-app report for a subdivision. It is mostly in HB, but a portion of it is in residential, there's wetlands associated with it. It's to take nine lots, merge them and reconfigure them into seven lots. And the applicant submitted a request to reauthorize the pre-submission report, which is in your time period. That would bring you to May twenty twenty-four. But in talking to Jackie, I think she wanted an update like how this project was going forward. And so I asked the applicant to come present that to you.
Okay, Greg.
So you have questions for me or?
Why don't you tell us what's happening?
Okay, well, we're submitting this for the subdivision and making nine lots into seven so that we can, we can start working on getting our project going. It's been taking three years, as everybody, well, maybe not everybody, but I know you two know, it's taken for a long time. So the subdivision is going to establish the amount of square footage we can get on each lot. And that's what we're doing.
So you've resolved all the ownership of all these lots?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's never been an ownership issue.
Okay, well, didn't someone pop up out of nowhere many years ago as an owner?
I don't think so.
I know we had a, we had a.
I don't remember that.
We had a pre-app report adopted on this, when, twenty, a year ago, two years?
Yeah.
May, May twenty twenty-two, yeah.
Right.
Was anything changed from the pre-app?
Nothing, it just took us a long time to get things rolling, I guess, with COVID and all this stuff. So we finally got all of our reports, the environmental reports and the traffic studies and everything that was asked for. And our time ran out, so we just applied for the extension in August and then Jackie asked for a work session.
Right.
Nothing's changed, really.
Okay, I just wanted to know if anything on the map was changed because we were reading the referrals that we got. And one from the Conservation Board.
Yes.
And their request is more stringent conservation, to protect the natural resources. And what they were looking at, that Kellis Pond is an impaired water body, but you know that, right?
Impaired by the loss, of course.
You have your copy.
Yeah, I have my copy. Let me just read this to you because this is what I had a question about.
Sure.
"The natural resources at this site would be much better served by a conservation subdivision design, which relocates the proposed right-of-way and clusters lots to the west and north, away from the wetlands, steep slopes and mature woodlands to the southeast and south, with virtually the entirety of the proposed Lot Two and the southerly most part of Proposed Lot One warranting the greatest degree of protections. Plans for a buffer along Montauk Highway also need to be integrated." So I wanted to ask you about that.
Maybe she can speak more on it. I know that we did this, our professionals took care of it and they addressed everything in that letter.
Right, yes, correct. So with our plans that we have submitted, we maintain the wetland buffer to protect the wetlands as is and we will be doing a planting plan to show the buffer along Montauk Highway. So this, right now, at the subdivision stage, is not developed, but we will be developing it for the actual submission.
And what kind, how big a buffer, how deep a buffer?
Um, as required. So it'll be about, I think, right now, so it'd be at least ten feet. But we would be designing it to achieve buffer status.
Is this the Montauk Highway buffer?
Yes.
Or the rear buffer?
No, the Montauk Highway.
The wetlands are staying within the wetland setback, we're not disturbing anything within the wetland setback.
What's, what's the setback for the commons? How large is that off in the front?
Hundred.
A hundred feet?
Now, when these lots come in for development, they're going to have to, each one of them has to go through the site plan, right?
Correct.
That's typically where we work out the buffer.
Keep in mind, but keep in mind that ten feet is not, is not going to cut it.
It'll be a more stringent buffer than ten, as you say.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
Well, minimum fifty feet, that is required in HB.
Minimum fifty.
Minimum fifty feet from the highway, right?
I think we look at street trees in that area, you know, getting some street trees.
Absolutely, yep.
Sure.
And I seem to remember there was some discussion of the interior circulation of the driveways or something.
Yeah, can you walk us through that?
Details of that, but.
Yeah, just give us an overview for that.
So right now, we have the proposed street coming in, that's why we have the cul-de-sac that allows for any emergency vehicles.
Is that opposite the signal of the commons, that entrance?
Yes, it is.
Yes, yes.
It aligns with that?
Yes, it is.
Exactly. And then we have the other right-of-way for the additional, the other lots over here. It's not shown.
It's here, yes.
Oh, yeah.
So Claire, when we do the site plans, do we set up like, is that where we set up the cross accesses?
I think you plan out for it with the whole subdivision process too. Because it's not in a vacuum, you know, there is like flag strips and things like that. I think you really look at traffic comprehensively with your subdivision too, yes. With maybe a sample site plan, not that they have to follow it, but it would be, this is a sample of what.
Yeah, because right now, we don't know what uses are coming in here.
Right.
Originally, I thought we were focusing on a large gym.
That was, that was years ago.
My recollection is.
I was in Gray then.
My recollection is that's an awful lot of what we talked about and the amount of traffic in and out and.
Right, so originally, we had Equinox Gym was going to be a tenant and they were taking, they were going to take twenty-seven thousand square feet on the eastern portion of the property. And it was a variance that was required at the time because they wanted to make one big building.
Right.
And we, that's how it started.
Yes.
That fell apart.
So I guess, if everything is staying the same with that large building, is this, so how could, how is a site plan not the same as it was?
Oh, it was reduced to, well, that was, had one very large lot on the eastern side. And the premise was, you know, we're going to do twenty-seven thousand square feet. We can do the subdivision there if you want, and we did twenty-seven thousand square feet anyway. But that was long gone and that was changed to a seven-lot subdivision.
So what we have in front of us now is not what we approved.
No.
No.
So then, I'm not sure what we're doing correctly.
It's confusing, yeah.
We saw this in March, Claire?
Mar, I'm sorry, May of last year?
May twelve, twenty twenty-two.
That's when you adopted the report.
That's when we adopted.
So can we see the, this is the original? You know, on the interior, there's seven, but then eight and nine are the.
Yeah, just, can you just go for the, for the, for the information to the board, just go over this.
Okay, so what you're looking at there, I believe, is the original nine-lot subdivision. Ms. Burke, if you look to the, on the eastern portion, you see a big giant lot, that's where the Equinox building was going to be going.
And is that still that lot size? So I thought we were reapproving something, but this is different.
No, this has nothing to do, this is, we put in front of you last year, this seven-lot subdivision.
Yeah.
And then this was what we would do, you put a report out on, I don't know the verbiage, I apologize. And then this is what we reacted to with our environmental reports and traffic studies and all, survey, new surveys and all.
This complies with zoning, right? Do they need a variance for this?
Uh, no, not identified, no.
So Claire, did they get the referrals now? Do they see the referrals or not?
They got a copy of the report with the referrals, we went over it, we got a little back and forth and a bit of changes at the time. And it was adopted, I looked it over again, I didn't see anything that stood out to me, but.
So they complied?
You have a whole process, you're going to have preliminary.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I, yeah.
And you're going to have final on the side.
Yeah, I've, 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 I've lost that middle ground in my memory.
Yeah.
And so, and that's when we'll go over the final traffic studies or?
Well, when you do SECR, you're going to definitely look at all the studies that you requested in this report, yes.
Because this is a major.
Yes, very important to Brichampton.
Yeah. So you saw all of the town engineers' comments about things matching up and you made all these changes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And Claire, you double-checked all of that?
I haven't seen the revised map because there's been no formal applications submitted, but they need to refresh the pre-app reports in order to go to the next step.
We are poised to hand everything in, we just need the extension or whatever.
To May twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, it'll be made.
It'll be handed in in about ten days.
Yeah.
We have, we have everything, but we won't hand it in until we get the extension, everything goes in. We were ready in August, but then you asked for the work session.
Yeah, well, just because it's, you know, it's been a year, a lot happens in a year.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand.
A lot happens in Brichampton in a year. And it's a very important.
My family and I understand, this is a very important piece and when we're done, hopefully, we're all still upright, we'll get it together.
So this is the original nine-lot subdivision that you have.
Well, the original nine lots, they were, yes, it wasn't a subdivision by us, but it was, we purchased it this way.
I understand, okay. And so Claire, could you show what's on here, just so we could have a comparison?
That's the proposal. So this lot gets smaller, there's a road proposed. This lot, it was like, you know, it's residentially zoned, but it's, there's been talk, some talk, it might be purchased from SECR, which would be appropriate because it's, it would help with protecting the ponds.
That'd be great.
That would be great, plus it's a tiny building, buildable space there.
What's your view on that?
It is definitely something that we would consider.
Yeah.
We've always worked well with the town, all the stuff we've done, so not really.
But the remainder would be mostly commercial.
Yep.
So point, point, just point out the various lots to us with here.
Sure. Oh, do you want, can you do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's easier.
Yeah.
Oh, I can't read. Um, this is the one lot, so I go west to east here, one, two, this is the third. And then, what, the other?
That's one.
Yeah, that's one, right?
Yep.
And then this one, and this one, and this one.
It's hard to read.
And then this big one, this big one on the east side.
Yeah, what was so useful about the first and just, you know, illustrating to be able for us to review and see it, the differences, you know, to have it like outlined in red or yellow or something like that, it's just a lot easier to see because there's so much.
That's a tricky, yeah.
With the wetlands and the elevations on there, it's hard to see exactly where the borders are.
It's so many lines, it's hard to figure out.
So the western, the western lots, are they numbered, one, two, three?
Mm-hmm.
So the entrance to those lots is.
May I correct you, it's labeled sixes, sevens on the furthest western. Seven is the furthest western.
Oh, this is one on the east side, wow.
One's over here, so that was.
One is east, that's a large lot.
One is east. That's the large lot, that's the one mostly.
And what is that, how many square feet is that?
A hundred and seven thousand square feet.
One oh seven?
Yeah.
Okay. And then on the western side, you've got six, seven?
I've got, I've got six, furthest is six, is seven. And then if you go, then I have six, five, four, three, two, and one.
Can you tell us the square footage of each individual lot?
Yes. Lot number one is a hundred and, you want the change too or just the big numbers? One oh seven, four oh six is lot number one.
Yeah, I don't need a change.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
Lot number two is, where's lot number two? Here, and that was ninety-seven thousand square feet. Lot number three is sixty-seven thousand square feet. Lot number four is sixty-four thousand square feet. Lot number five is sixty thousand square feet. Lot number six is seventy-eight thousand square feet. Lot number seven is seventy-nine thousand square feet.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And along with Kate's comments about the colors, if you could bring copies of those for each of us for the next presentation?
Yeah, sure.
That would be very helpful.
I do, I mean, I had copies. I had copies, I just didn't know what you wanted to see in the discussion, but this is.
We have.
Or they can make the.
We have more delimitable copies.
It's actually old.
Yeah, the answer's yes, though.
Yes.
Okay.
So the lot, the residential lot with the wetlands on it, you said it was how many thousand square feet?
Uh-huh, ninety-seven thousand square feet.
But what of that is wetlands?
A lot of it.
Ninety?
No. Oh, thanks, no. I mean, if you're asking if any of it's buildable, is that your question?
No, I'm asking you, all right, what is the buildable portion?
I would say the buildable portion is probably fifteen thousand square feet.
Fifteen thousand, okay, and that's the lot that the town might be purchasing from you?
We, we meant, it's been brought up to us in talks.
Okay, and so my question was access on those western lots, is it that road that's coming in doesn't?
Right here, yes.
The common driveway.
Yes.
A common driveway, four lots.
Seven.
Seven, six?
Seven, six, and I would say five.
So three lots.
Yes, so you want to minimize the curve because of Montauk.
And as I remember, that's in only, every, oh, Egress is going to be at the signal.
That's right, it's right in, right out, right.
Right.
So you've not made any connector, interior connector driveway, so that if somebody comes in there and they want to come out to the main signal, they could do that, because I don't see any.
But that would be by the site plan approval?
But that would be a part of, right, that's.
That would be like a conceptual site plan that you would review along with the subdivision.
Okay.
Because you're going to be considering SECR on this.
Because I think Tom's, Tom's point is well-taken, that we talked about connecting and interior, because it's a large part, a parcel.
Absolutely.
Will that be submitted right along with the preliminary?
It should be, because that's part of the SECR review, it's been mentioned before in prior reviews.
Because we have to look at the whole, the whole application.
Right, and if any easements, it would be appropriate to have it along with the subdivision. But a little bit flexible as things change, yeah.
But conceptually, there'll be interior circulation so that they could, everybody can get out of the signal.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
Most definitely.
And the western lots, is that where Corville is now?
No, I'd say Corville's in the middle.
Corville's in the middle.
Right in the middle.
Okay.
You can clean up there if you like, it's the Will Square Building.
I'm having, I can't.
Is that staying or not?
Well, it won't, it won't stay if, once this happens, because it doesn't comport, so eventually it would, it would be moved or come down. Yes, they want to stay.
And my question is, any kind of future cross-access, it's going to encroach more on one lot than others, based on what I'm seeing on the lot lines? Right, any connectivity?
All connected, all connected. Every lot is going to be connected to the other lots.
No, he means the properties east and west of this property.
Oh, east to west, yeah, that's something to consider. I think that will be the west side during design process.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's going to affect setbacks and all that kind of stuff.
I know that, I know that this will be reviewed in SECR, but I remember clearly in the old application, that Gloria's question was, we have to look at what's going on around this area, across the street, to the east, to the west, because that, this will be a major impact.
Right, so it's, we didn't see, I don't remember, Mattress Farm Sleepies, I'll call them Sleepies for us, we remember, it is right to the east, right?
Yes.
And this is residential over there.
Yeah, there won't be any connection to the west, I know that.
Well, I think to the west, isn't that still farmland?
No.
It's residential.
It's residential. It's the Kellis Pond neighbors.
Yeah, it's further west than.
So this is all HB?
Yes.
Uh, substantially, except for that one lot and the great.
That internal lot, which is.
Is Trachtenberg still there?
No, no, he sold to Trump.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, and then Trump sold it to whomever, Junior, Donald Trump Junior.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Okay, so what's the next step?
Today, they're asking for an extension, and so I have it on the agenda for an extension of the pre-app report till May twenty twenty-four. And it's good that we've gotten like a little recap on the big concepts. But then you'll get into the SECR review when the pre-application, pre-sub, preliminary application.
Thank you for the refresher.
Yeah, it's important.
No, no, how about I need to be refreshed once in a while? I got a lot, a lot of stuff going on, you know, so every once in a while. I'm on top of this, don't get me wrong, but like looking at the lots and counting them out again. Did we lose one? It happens to the best of us.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're closing the work session, going into the regular.
This is work.
Yes.
Do we need to? During the regular session, should we reauthorize?
Do you want to just reauthorize, it's in discussion, you're bringing?
Should we?
Yes, because it's, it's on the agenda for the very end.
It's number twenty-three.
Number twenty-three, Connor, okay. So this is to reauthorize the pre-app report to May twenty twenty-four. Have a motion. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed extension, seven in favor, thanks.
Thank you, boy. Appreciate your help.
Take care. Thanks.
Thanks.
So, um. Claire, how do you want to work this?
I think I'll go first, if you don't mind.
Sure. Number three is off the agenda.
Yep.
Okay. So you'll do number six, Claire, the East Quad Mobile Home Park?
Yes.
Okay.
So we had this at the last meeting, and I have a fast appointment to you and the report and the resolution for approval. So I'll just update you on any changes since then.
This was the draft, Claire, the draft staff report?
We had the draft staff report at the last meeting. And the board went over it and they, they were, that you were fine with the project, and I just prepared the resolution for these details. So, there's a couple sets, so there's a little big ones, and here's a couple sets of the little ones, if you share. Little ones or big ones, that's how best I say it.
Something was over that way.
Is it up, is it up on the, we can look it up there too?
Yeah, we can go to that.
This is unwieldy.
Yeah.
No, we'll deal with that, thanks.
Do you want to put this one in the middle of the? Should I take the big one?
Yeah, yeah.
Then I'll put it on. This is probably those accurate, with the new development is going on, north, if you don't tell me. So in the staff report itself, I just updated a couple items. Where on page eight of the staff report, I just clarified the number of units, because the ZDA mentioned one oh two, but it was actually one oh two plus a house on the property that's located on lot number nine. So I've noted that.
Your highlight is almost impossible to read.
Almost impossible, it's fine when you print it and then when you copy it, which is. John, do you want to come up? Does your, do you want to come up on your projects?
We're on East Quad?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, great. I didn't have any, at least with my cousins, so I was having.
Family reunion.
Oh, I see.
Want to come up, John?
And he dragged you to the planning.
These are the billable hours, John. What if already happens?
Does John, does John have a copy, Claire, of the report?
He does, I think the only comments, I did see Kim Jones' comments.
Yeah.
And you want to add something like, as, as there being.
Well, what I wanted to do to both the staff report and the resolution, yes, we're going to take out the old septic systems and we'll do them as per Kate, as you suggested, as for the, obviously, we have to ask for the Suffolk County Department of Health Regulations. But I wanted to add that we would, as the units are replaced, because we're going to.
Yeah.
Replace them. So after, the existing septic systems shall be abandoned.
For the twenty-one lots, right?
Yeah, as the units are replaced, that's in the, that's in the.
Draft report?
That's in the staff report, page eleven K. And then in the general conditions of the resolution of approval, you've got general condition approval H, former septic systems for the twenty-one units shall be abandoned per Suffolk County Health Department requirements. I had, on a site-by-site basis, as the units are replaced.
To coordinate with what you just said.
Yeah, just to. If those were, I think, I don't think they're, I think they're just housecleaning things, because, but then the other thing that I wanted to, I had a lot of response to the Suffolk County, I mean, from the Central Pine Barrens report. And if they're sitting there in the staff report, I know they weren't, weren't picked up necessarily in, in the resolution, I was wondering if we could have a statement, as opposed to going parsing through this stuff, that just says the Central Pine Barrens reports contain recommendations, but the Planning Board is the approving authority for this application.
Well, that would be correct.
It would be, it's correct, but I don't want anyone looking at that, the stuff that's in the staff report and saying, oh, well, these are recommendations. Because some of them, they, I think the reviewer thought it was a subdivision and they're talking about a yield plan and an open space parcel and. So just the Central Pine Barrens reports contain recommendations, but the Planning Board is the approving authority for this application, which is the truth.
Well, they've all been, I mean, what they say, it's accommodated, it's in here, right? Number of the acres.
No, but.
The tax parcel.
But they make, they make recommendations that don't, or, I mean, they say, where's the open space parcel, where's the yield match?
I think that they probably feel like they don't want to make it look like you're ignoring them, so maybe the Planning Board has noted the comments of the Pine Barrens, but also, you know, notes that they are the approving authority.
That's fine.
They're taking into consideration where they can.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
So it's like they considered them and adopted what they.
And they, and they have, I mean, you have, you know, there is some conditions related to what they have.
I just don't want someone opening the file and looking at it and being.
And saying, we did not get Pine Barrens.
We didn't get Pine Barrens, we didn't look at them, but I also want everyone to know that you guys are the approving authority, that's all. Is that okay, Claire?
Yeah, and considered the relevant issues in their decision?
Whatever.
Where are you, what page are you?
I'm not saying you've ignored them, I'm just saying, it's ultimately your, your say.
The Pine Barrens comments are on the referrals, but page eight mentions both the Aqua Protection over the District of Central Pine Barrens, so I'll have a new paragraph that will summarize that.
Okay.
Thanks, everything, I mean, I don't really have anything else.
Did we talk about phasing, project, phasing?
Yeah, that's the last paragraph on the report, phasing plan. What I did is I wrote the decision where if we would, we would do the inspection prior to the first CO, which all the pads should be in, the sanitary system should be in, so that's appropriate. And then I'm just double-checking after the thirty, twenty-first CO, that everything continues to meet the site plan. I would do that typically in any plan.
You spell that out.
I say that here, I have the conditions related to that. The other question is, John, would you want this, I mean, site plans are valid for two years, they can be extended easily with the board or admin? Or do you want, you've given five years prior and bigger projects, like a golf course and things like that?
That would be great, I mean, and then, I mean, that's, I think that's all I can ask. And then if I have to come back hat in hand, then it'll be, hopefully, most of the stuff will be done.
Will be done.
Maybe all, or maybe not, hopefully, I won't have to come back, but I know there's a tension between, like, people who are going to move out and.
But that's internal.
They don't want to have any strong army going there, so that, I don't want to be, that's really what that is as much as anything.
Is the wording about the CO consistent with what you were talking about before with the replacements of the IA systems? Do you not see any conflict there?
The IA system is going in entirely before the first CO does.
But as movement?
No, well, what Kate said was she wanted to make sure that the septic systems were abandoned with the Suffolk County Department Health Regulations. That's fine, I just, the IA system is have to, is going to have to go in in one shot. But as we move these units, you know, onto the new sites, that's what, I don't want to have, I can't, obviously, I can't abandon them all at the same time, because I'll be taking septic systems away from people.
So the order of operations is like, you identify the unit or the family that's going to be moved.
Right.
They go into the proposed development area, hook into the new IA system.
Yes.
And prior to CO for that new space that they move to, the septic system on the one is abandoned in exchange for a transfer of CO to the other. So that's, I think, what we were getting at.
That's fine.
Is like making sure that there's like one going away and one coming in here.
Yeah, no, 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 that's fine. No, that's fine. I just, I, I, it's not going, I'm not going to be able to kick all these people.
Right, yeah, so I think like it has to be triggered legally.
If we're still flushing their toilets.
The CO, I guess, council would be linked to the abandonment of the prior septic system that's moving.
Well.
To make sure there's not a bunch of old septic systems staying there that could get plugged into, because we're not adding any number of units. We're taking one, putting it over here.
Here's, here's my issue with this, with that. I, I'd rather have the CO for the new units be obtained when I've hooked up to the new approved wastewater system, because if I'm ready to go, I know I have to abandon them under this approval. But I don't want to have to necessarily be waiting around, because I've got to take a sample, it's got to go to the lab, because somebody's got to come out. And I could have somebody ready to move in, because they've hooked up to the, the new unit, but I'm waiting two months, three months for the health department.
So the abandonment is really.
I can't get away from it, because I have to do it, because that's your approval.
It's a site plan condition.
So give them a TCO until.
Give them what?
Until the other one does that.
Can we be like six months to do the abandonment, like to effectuate the, each of the abandonments, like the six months?
I'm going to go on a limb here and say the health department's going to be on top of this.
Going to be what?
On top of this. Sure, yeah.
Okay, still fine.
I mean, I'm not, they're not, they're going to be on top of this. They don't want anything more than is going on, so.
Yeah, but I'm just, I don't want, I can't be subject to a schedule that I can't, I think you're right, the health department, you know, but it's the cost of good intentions and everything, you know, I, they can be early to manpower, it's the manpower.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to bash the health department, it's just, I, the manpower is tough.
I know it'll be addressed, but it, does the health department or the town have some mechanism for enforcement if we find out it wasn't ever done?
That's what I'm getting at, because it'd be like it's a CO.
Which is, I'm in violation of the approval, which is specifically a violation, a violation of a covenant and contained in approval in the town code is, is a, is a town code violation.
So then we would issue notice of violation.
You've got a hammer. You go, take me to the justice court.
So Christine, that's good. Do you want to, think we should add any more words?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I want to make sure it's, it's just, it's clear, because I don't want any ambiguity and whatever.
Well, I, my thought is that the CO happens as soon as I hook up to the new IA system.
Right, up to the point first.
But then, but then I've got to abandon, your, your, your resolution of approval says I've got to abandon the septic system from whence that other unit came from.
I'm demolishing the initial of the other one? Yes, because they're not adding any units, they're taking them away from here. They're going to get a demo permit.
Yeah, I don't know if they're demolishing, I don't know if, I don't know if there's a secondhand market for some of these things, I don't know.
Well, demolished to the fact, the fact that the building department has to close that out, and I think with the demo. Okay, so that's where it's linked.
What do you do, fill them with sand or something? What do you do, fill them with sand when you abandon them?
Yeah, you, you, you take them out, you make sure there's nothing funky in them, and they send it to the lab, and it comes back, God willing.
Pump out the bottom of them. It comes back?
Excuse me?
It comes back?
Report, the lab report.
The report.
Oh, the lab report.
Usually there's not a problem with residential stuff. I mean, I've had a couple of, we were, believe it or not, like, there was a doctor's office one time, and they, they were developing x-rays, and so there was mercury.
Right.
But most of the time in a residential situation, they come back.
Yeah.
So what, you want to?
So the abandonment starts simultaneously when you get the CO for the new one. So the question is, should be six months to, to totally complete that process, or what?
But I think Christine said that they have to secure a demo permit.
I said it.
Oh, you said it.
Yeah, I said it.
So that, that permit tracks the work being done.
Are we complicating this?
Yeah, I think you're really complicating it. Why don't you give me six months to, I'll, I'll live with six months to abandon it from the time it, it moves. I just don't want to be, if I'm ready to go in with that new unit, I just don't.
No, that shouldn't affect your going in. It's the abandonment.
Are you moving units from, from one place to the other, or is it going to be new units?
No, I think they're going to be new units, because the whole idea is they're bigger.
The thing is, if you don't link, and I know you know what I'm getting at, is like, if they, if they're saying they're moving this one out, and they're moving someone over here, and there's a septic system to link into, you're basically giving an opening to increase the number of units, which we said no to.
No, I'm not, because it has to go, absolutely not, because I can't move one, I have the whole part, the whole idea of this.
It's one for one.
The ZBA approval, your approval, is I can't have an existing one there until I've moved it on to the other site, so no, it's self-enforcing.
Just put in a thing that says generally you move to abandon each as you move through, just say that in here.
Yeah.
Just put in that you'll move to abandon, and then don't, we won't worry about the back end, how long it's taking you. You know what I'm saying? Like that upon relocation, you'll move to abandon the septic.
That, 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 that.
Well, you have to secure.
But you, I, I'm required to do that under this. Don't forget, this is a strong document. This directs me what to do.
What's the enforcement mechanism?
You can go to justice court.
Yeah, code violation.
And depending on the severity of it.
You could get an injunction.
Yeah.
Who, Christine, who checks them?
If someone notices, right, that's what I'm saying. You don't link it to a CO.
The standard issue CO would probably check, I would assume, to make sure that.
It's one for one.
Yeah, I mean, they should do that.
You want to say the building department shall, shall confirm prior, no, the building, not prior, the building department. I just don't want to get caught in this, like, catch twenty-two. The building department shall confirm that steps have been taken to abandon and, and.
Right, prior to this, of the steps of prior decisions of that CO.
No.
It's simultaneous, no.
It's not going to happen, I'm just, it's like overly, I just didn't want to be inconsistent with what you were saying before you raised the issues.
You have to secure, you have to secure a demo permit to ban it, correct?
I, I don't know that.
Is that necessary?
I don't know if you're getting abandoned or not.
I don't know if you're getting.
Claire, you brought that up, is that required?
They might be moving and removing it at will.
I would imagine, how else, I would imagine the health department, they, they're giving this, helping, giving money to have this done, that they're making sure that the other units are eventually abandoned.
Yeah, I mean, that is their, their, that's their duty.
I mean, I think that's.
Your approval requires me to do this.
They're just worried about who's going to monitor.
Yeah.
I feel if you, if you can secure a demo permit for the abandonment, that's a tracking mechanism. Not, not having it abandoned, just.
Okay.
You got these, you got the demo permit, then it's in their, their minute track, and they'll track it. So if the ninety days goes up and they have been called to inspect or renewed, you'll get a notice. Hey, renew, have it been done, they follow up on that. It's like when you get a building permit.
I'm just wondering if the building department typically requires a demo permit when somebody puts a new home, like over in Riverhead, you know, that's still in town. I don't think they require a demo permit. Somebody bought the new trailer, it's the new improved model, they put it in there, and they take the other one away. Half the time it gets squirted away.
But this is a ban, this is a banning structure, even though it's below the ground.
I don't think that requires a demolition permit. A demolition permit, you know, is usually required because a house is hooked up to street gas, it's hooked up to all that sort of stuff, and they want to make sure that, that if anything is, when you take down the house, it goes to an appropriate, it gets disposed of in an appropriate place. I don't think you have those same worries. I mean, some of these things may just be carted away.
They define a structure as anything, as any body placed above or below the ground.
There's no question, I don't argue with that.
So they consider septic, they do, they could, typically, they're not standalone.
Right.
There's usually a house associated, in this case, there's going to be standalone structures, subterranean structures.
Yeah, let's, like, go through the regular demo permit for a house.
Like, different things that get approved and then go into violation.
Yeah, this is not one house, this is a whole systematic thing that's going to go on.
Exactly.
Well, the question, I think the six month, John agreed to that. The minute he gets a CO for over here.
Have to abandon.
This is abandoned simultaneously in the six months to accomplish it.
And then if I can't get it in six months, I got to come back and ask.
I'm not even thinking you get it in six months, I'm just saying you have to.
Okay, well, that's even better.
You get it taken away.
I just don't want to overly complicate this removal process, because actually, remember, it's a, it's a good thing.
Yes.
Get these things, it's probably got, half of them probably have, like, brick.
Raya.
Sesspools.
Right, but if those brick cesspools are not being abandoned in that place, you can still get into them.
Kate, you keep on saying that, you have no faith in your own power to enforce your own approval?
Well, I'm not going to go out there personally, and I'm asking what the, what the bulletproof way is, is to link it to the CO. That one has to be banned.
No, I'm not going, that's not fair. That's just not fair. I think you're.
And I'm asking if there's another mechanism to cancel.
I don't think it's any more or less bulletproof than what, what we have, because ultimately, it would go down to a court proceeding, it would go down to, in that case, if we failed to do it, then they would bring over it. If they was against us, they could tell us to issue it, and we'd have to be in litigation on that end of it. So it, it, it really, if, if this is normally how we would do it, and we're putting the extra language in that says you have, you're going to be bound to within six months of relocation and hook into the IA, aband.
Abandon the other one, fine, yeah.
I think that's really all we can do.
Because the other thing is that if, if you relocate one, one property, that person can't fully relocate into a new house until you have a CO, so you could be, they could be caught in limbo there for.
Right, so that's always in the six months.
So the thing is to give them a CO, and you have six months to.
Yeah, from the.
And then it's a violation of the approval.
Thank you, George.
Right, so.
So.
And I, I, I wouldn't use that light about how many homes in the town of Southampton lived in before this.
Too many.
Strike that for the minutes, please.
Claire, so you've got wording?
Former unit sanitary system shall be abandoned within six months.
Decisive occupancy on the new unit.
Okay, that's it, John?
I'm thrilled.
Can I ask emergency access questions?
Emergency access.
Emergency access.
Yes.
Page four there, East Quad Fire Department, Fire District. Because we talked about the emergency access, and I got a little confused last time, and I just want to confirm. Number two, under the East Quad Fire District, says that if the project's fenced in, access gate with a minimum, blah, 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 with the fourteen feet must be installed. That was what we talked about, there's a gate and a key or something that if a brush fire.
Probably just a crash gate.
A crash gate.
Crash gate, or a key. They just, they, they don't stop for a key.
Yeah, they go.
So number, number, right, barrel through, that's better than a key. Number three, is it the same thing?
No.
The access between Malloy and Willow Road.
This is Malloy last, so we talked about this at the last meeting.
Right, and I just.
Instead of go, having the connection here, which is what was originally shown, I think now it is shown on your plan here, I just put it in again, just to double check. It's going to come here, because it's going to serve the new units.
Yeah.
And on all sides is town land, so we're not next to someone's house or anything like that, so that fourteen-foot wide cleared path will require.
And this is going to make the neighbors happy, because they were very, is that just?
This is only emergency access.
Just, thank you.
Right.
Because we're going to use the existing roadway for the typical.
It was the south one that people were concerned about, that.
Bean opened it all.
Right.
And then there was a back and forth, and it's determined that this should be sufficient for the, for the units.
And this one, that one we're talking about now, a little bit to the north, isn't.
Mallory West, Malloy West, excuse me.
That isn't just going to, if they go, again, I'm just asking this question, there are a lot of road ends where, end up becoming dumps. People drive in their trucks down the.
Why don't you gate it, but gate it at the beginning and the end, if you want, I, you know.
So this area is now going to have the new units, just, do you see my cursor?
Right, yeah, okay.
This is the new area with the new units.
So the connection that way, you're going to the new units.
Yes.
And to the left, to the west, is just always what it's been.
Yeah.
So whatever goes on there or doesn't, just continues. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I think that's.
But if you wanted to gate it at both ends, have to crash gate at both ends, no? So people can't dump?
No, I just was concerned about the cut through and the, you know, dumping at the end of the road end or whatever, but.
Yeah.
I think, I think makes sense, what you explained it, Claire.
Yeah, so it's, yeah.
And that's explained in here.
It is, the comments coming from the Fire District, which is what we wanted, and then I put that as conditions. That's what that is going to be, an emergency access to the set of section of the Fire Marshal and the Fire District. Sufficiently with the gates. Okay, this is for your consideration.
Okay, any more questions? John, you okay?
I'm fine, thanks very much.
So our action deadline is today, so motion to approve by Dennis, second by Gloria. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed extensions, seven in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry, and this is also the negative declaration. We had reviewed it the last time, so I did it in one resolution. If you want me to do it in two, I can.
Two.
You want two? Okay, so it's a little.
We disapprove.
We disapproved it. Sorry, we, we're so mired in, so issue a negative declaration.
Okay, motion to issue a neg deck on this.
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed extensions, seven in favor.
I feel that we should rescind the previous one and re-adopt it.
Why are you doing, I just, I'm not, I'm not objecting, because I'm getting a neg deck, but why are you doing that?
Because neg decks come first.
All right, so.
Oh, oh.
So a motion.
That's required in state law.
Okay, motion to rescind the approval.
Move to rescind by motion.
For the East Quad Mobile Park. Motion by Dennis, second by George, all in favor?
Aye.
So it is rescinded. Now we are going to approve.
Now I'll re-motion to approve.
The East Quad Mobile Home Park, moved by Dennis, second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed extensions, seven in favor, okay?
So, so there's another question. You rescinded the, your original approval so that you could.
Approval. Do a neg deck first.
Re-approve it.
So you could re-approve it having issued a negative declaration prior to the actual approval.
Sequentially. Right, exactly.
We're still, we're still getting up to speed in this process.
Okay.
You, the professor, you should.
Claire was, Claire was too polite to stop us, that's what the problem was.
And you felt, you felt this weird too, and you're like, okay.
I was giving her the, the pat.
That's every time.
I'm just, just another local bar, Tony Toho is the.
Oh, yes, he is.
You were a bow tie, no, no, he wasn't.
Tony, no.
Did he wear, he didn't wear a bow tie. That was somebody else.
No, that was.
A bow tie.
No.
The Malloy.
Corridor, maybe?
Yeah.
No.
And then my, just, my map, my maps got signed on, my maps got signed on.
Yes. The maps.
Camp Jerome.
I just saw, I just saw in them.
Because one of those is going to, one of those lots is going to the town.
Town, that's right.
Thanks a lot, guys. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. They're all signed there, John. So number twenty-six, we can acknowledge that signature on Camp Jerome.
Yeah.
Gloria has signed that. So Claire, do you want to jump to reading eight, number eight, nine one seven, that's incomplete?
Yes, so the situation with this one, it's on the corner of Windermere Courts and North Phillips.
But can we please name the, so, yes, sorry, nine seventeen West Main, one Windermere Court, Remsenburg.
Can you show the overhead? Yeah.
This is incomplete because something is missing, Claire?
Yes, the landscaping and lighting plan is now, is missing.
Okay.
So, but I do, do you want me to, if I can't, if I don't have it, do you want me to pull up an aerial?
Well, we're deeming it incomplete, so, not really.
I think if it's incomplete, then no. Okay. I didn't know that information.
Yeah.
Okay, good, yes.
So motion to deem this incomplete.
Motion.
By Kate, second by Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed extensions, seven in favor. Claire, number nine is an extension.
Yes.
Hampton Sticks Realty Corp., thirty-nine West Montalk Highway, Hampton Bay.
Extension, yep.
Extension to September twenty-eight. Motion by Dennis, second by George, all in favor? Opposed extensions, seven in favor.
And then my next one, which is for Anthony, is number fourteen, Teresi Gaspar.
Teresi. Teresi Gaspar and De Vera, ninety-one Fanning Avenue and one seventy-four Wakeman Road. This is completeness, right?
It is. Let me get an aerial for you. It involves this lot and this lot, and it's a, it's a two lot subdivision, so they have the required information to process the application. The last public hearing on this was in March of twenty twenty-two, so Anthony was inclined to waive it. There was no public interest, but it's up to you if you wanna hold a public hearing or not.
What's the, so, it's, the two lots there are together now and separating into two lots?
Yep, let me just see if I can find the.
So, we had a public hearing on this, Claire? I have those notes on Thomas and Julie Crowley, that it was, the hearing was April eleventh, and we'd do a thirty day written comment, but what, is this the same?
March, March twenty twenty-two on this one. But let me give you the site plan. Let me pull up.
Let's take a look at it.
My files. Let me pull up the subdivision map, so you can see it accurately.
So, Claire, this give us two R twenty lots?
Mm-hmm, yep. Final application, this is the one with the Health Department approval. Why does that not look the same?
Could you zoom in a little bit?
Yeah.
Is it the same application? Gaspar and De Vera, Teresi?
Oh, yeah, it is. It's these two, I'm sorry, it's these two lots.
Okay.
Yeah. So, this will lock, this house would go away and have the, yeah, that makes sense.
So, we had a public hearing in March, a year ago, not over a year ago?
Oh, yeah, two, oh, okay, two lot line mo-, two lot subdivision and lot line modification. That's what's happening, yes.
And there were no public comments?
Nope, no public interest.
So, the question is whether or not we.
Want a public hearing?
Or a thirty day written comment period?
It's up to you, yeah.
Everybody, thirty day written comment period, thirty day written comment period. So, deeming it complete with thirty days.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, seven in favor. And the next one, number fifteen, Thomas and Julie Crowley, is a similar situation. That was in April one, twenty twenty-two, public hearing.
Yes.
With no comment.
No public comments.
So, do we want to?
Can we just see it slightly?
Yep.
That is the subdivision, and I pretty much assume it's called like that way.
Claire, would you mind zooming in a little bit?
Sure.
Thanks.
It's probably two lots at one time anyway.
It probably was.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
The structure's coming down or the structure remains?
I think it's structure remains, but you know what? Let me pull it up.
Yeah, we end up with two eleven thousand acre lots? Is that what we end up with?
Yeah, that's quite.
Yes, it's R fifteen.
R fifteen.
Uh, this one went to the zoning board appeals.
Yeah.
Um, because.
Side yard?
There's probably an inadvertent merger.
Right, this is undoing a non-conforming lot that was merged.
Right.
Yes, exactly. But let me see if I can just pull up the map, so you have it. So, there it is, yes. So, that lot is staying, and then they need setback relief too.
And then they stay.
So, the lot with the structure would be non-conforming?
The lot with the structure has a non-conforming setback, yes, yeah.
Will it be compact?
Okay, so the.
Again, there's no public comments on this, and there was a ZVA hearing also on this one, so, it's up to you with the thirty day or the public hearing.
Hearing.
Okay.
Thirty day, thirty day, yeah. Okay, thirty day written comment period, motion by Craig, second by George, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, seven in favor.
Okay, and I have.
Ten, ten Marine?
Yeah, that's my next one, and the act of acceptance here, right? You're here for this. So, this one is a request to do an expedited site plan slash wetlands permit. There's an existing structure on the property, and let me give you, well, let's start with the aerial, right?
So, this is a site plan for the demolition of buildings. I think our expedited site plan review list does not include such a major demolition.
Um, that, that would be definitely up to you.
For sure. Who's, who is here representing this? You are, okay.
Do you wanna come up and see?
You wanna come up and?
Yeah. So, this is the existing building in question. It is twelve hundred and ten square feet, and they, the proposal is to build a new one, forty-two feet back, and it would be approximately in this location. So, it would get wider to achieve that setback, but the square footage would be similar or less.
But it'd be moving away from the creek.
It'd be moving away from the water, yes.
Right.
And just to identify you both.
Buddy Spelman.
Stone?
Spellman.
Oh, spellman, wow, yes, right on your chart.
Once you cross, once you cross the canal, it's a very common name.
But I mean, this is not really the, for what expedited review is about, so, I mean, I, I really would question it, particularly.
So, we can schedule a public hearing. There's availability on the twelfth of October, if you wanna do that, and then we'll process it.
I mean, the only thing is, you're taking a structure, you're getting rid of a structure that's close to the water.
Yeah, it's, I think it's one foot from the volcano.
Yeah.
It's right on the water.
Can you?
It's right on, right?
I think that.
It was a railway building from the original arena that we bought, and it's just a storage shed for us now. So, what's happened is it doesn't really function for what we, to base, so we wanted to reconfigure it upland to make it more of a usable building and move it away from the water.
I don't question the intent. I think the intent is great. I'm just referring to the process. Because expedited review sometimes is to change out windows, minor, minor, this is, to me, this is major.
Will they have a site plan?
Demolish, do they have a site plan?
No, will they come back into a site plan?
Yeah.
No, this is a site plan slash wetlands permit. They submitted the full project, what you needed to do. I didn't know which way you'd wanna go.
Okay, so they have a building there.
So, this dash line is a two building.
But in any case, you could do, I know I'm calling it expedited, but whether you need a public hearing on the project is what I'm referring to. We could do the full referrals, waive the public hearing, because they meet wetlands setbacks now. What, pulling it away, the wetlands setback would be forty feet. The jurisdiction's fifty, but you'd meet the wetlands setback. So, that's one factor. In the case of conservation, if you came in with a house, Teresa could correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, you would, you'd be eligible for not a hearing in the project. Again, like a site plan in this case, who's most affected? Well, they own the property next door.
Yeah.
The northern property, is that a residence?
They, they own the property next door, so, again, that's just, that's, I'm referring to expedited, but I think what they're asking for is the waiver
Take out, take out the word expedited.
Of the, a site plan, waiver of the public hearing.
Yeah.
So, would, we do full referrals. We would refer to everybody, yeah.
Well, that's important, okay.
Does it have septic in it? Is it, are there bathrooms or?
No, septic, right.
This is a storage building.
It's a storage facility is what it is.
And when you take this down, you, do you, I mean, I think what's important is that when anything is demolished right around wet ones, how you take, how you take it down and how you remove it is critically important.
Oh, they still have to get a demo permit.
Yeah, very carefully.
Yeah.
Demo permit, referral to wetlands, in any case, Fire Marshal, this will be a full referral.
Okay, so how are we wording? This is not, we're taking out expedited.
Yeah. Right, exactly. We can do that now. We can just say they received a site plan, wetlands permit application, but you're considering waiver of the public hearing due to the meeting of the wetlands setbacks, and that the immediate neighbor is their own property.
And the same owner, sure.
Yeah, okay.
Are you ready comfortable with that?
And you have a hearing, although there is no.
No, there is.
Then there would, there'd be no hearing. There would be a thirty day written comment.
Thirty day written comment period.
And then we'll do the full referrals, so we'll see them back here to do the discussion in a month, and then a decision in forty-five days.
You understand all that?
I believe so, much.
I know, I speak my own language, but.
Because they own the property next door, like, no one would get noticed anyway. Is that?
Oh, people would across the street, they would get noticed, but again, we're, it's the fact that the structures are remaining the same or smaller.
Yeah, I also have joining property.
It should be the benefit.
You'd take care of most of their boats anyways.
There you go. Okay, motion, motion by Dennis. We're waiving the public hearing, thirty day written comment period. George, second by George, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, seven in favor. Thank you.
And are you, are you really related to John Bennett?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
We had to get you on the record for that.
You're rooster crowing, rooster crowing somewhere.
Claire?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I happen to know that there was some strange stuff missing on that, on your resident, what you put in the packet, so take, just take a look at it. Yes, I put the underline, because I didn't know what you wanted. That's why I said, I'm like, would you wanna do it expedited? You know, so, we gotta answer, so I'm gonna fill it all in. Okay. Perfect.
Okay, number eighteen is off the agenda. Bartlett Tree Experts.
Right.
Finish up with Claire. Claire, you have Sabonic Cottage, number twenty-one.
Actually, I have it Blessing Fields.
Blessing Field, twenty.
Oh, twenty, right.
Yeah, Blessing Fields. Oh, Blessing Fields, right.
That's gonna be an extension until October twenty-sixth with a deadline on that one. We may see it earlier if it's, they.
Action deadline, extension to October twenty-sixth. Motion?
Motion.
Mike Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, seven in favor.
And then Sabonic Cottage is a ninety day submission of a deadline extension of the subscription plan.
Ninety days. Do we have a date, a date for it?
Twelve, twelve. And that would be December fourteenth.
Twelve fourteen.
To October. Today is September.
No, uh, December.
December.
It's December, okay. I didn't hear that, sorry.
January twenty-fourth. My fingers are.
Yeah, motion for, by George, second by Dennis, all in favor?
Motion. Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay.
And then.
Twenty-two Butter Lane.
Yeah, seven twenty Butter Lane. They're post submitting their plans, but they haven't gotten them, so they're asking for the ninety day extension for submission plans.
To December then, again, December fourteen, ninety days. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second.
Second.
By Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, seven in favor.
Gloria's gonna finish signing Galilee Church.
Okay, Connor, we did twenty-three.
Acknowledged Lewis Road.
You want to acknowledge Lewis?
Acknowledged Lewis Road, where Gloria spent several hours signing that.
With special accommodation, accommodation.
Got a massage in between?
Pardon?
Massage, all the things they had to.
No, but I got a lot of help from the applicants.
And what about Galilee Church?
And that's.
Half of it's signed, the other half will be when we finish here.
Okay, do we acknowledge it?
Okay, so that's acknowledged, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, we've now acknowledged the signature, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. Teresa, so, welcome.
I did all Anthony's.
You did them all?
Yes.
You did all Anthony's, right? And what, and Jeff is gonna come up later?
Yeah, if he finishes up, I'll go quick.
Okay, so, Teresa's first is in sixteen Indian Avenue. The address is two oh one Springville Road. And this is an action deadline.
For some reason, I always have three copies of the subdivision in the file.
We'll share.
So, as you can see on the screen up there, this is the aerial of the proposed subdivision, and then here's the subdivision map. The application is to divide the parcel into residential lots.
Yes, thank you.
And proposed lot one will contain the existing dwelling and will take access off of Springville Road, and proposed lot two will take access off of Coolidge Road. It's a type-two action pursuant to seeker, and there are various comments from engineering, fire prevention, I'm sorry, Fire District and Conservation. It was brought to my attention that I failed to note that the proposed lot two will require a road frontage variance, because it doesn't need the forty-foot setback, I'm sorry, the forty-foot road frontage requirement, so I did amend the report to include that. If the variance is granted, it is recommended that they proceed to final subdivision, and it's also recommended that they resolve the encroachments on the adjacent property for, from the driveway of proposed lot one. The main issue here is that a large portion of the parcel was cleared, and the subdivision doesn't accurately represent the extent of clearing, and Conservation had recommended that buffers be established along the Westerly property line and those be restored, because as you can see on the aerial photograph here, right down here is the headquarters of Smith's Creek. So, this is all part of that watershed, and preserving and restoring vegetation and wildlife movement corridors was important to the Conservation Board here, particularly since Smith Creek is under a lot of water quality pressure issues. So, those were the, the main issues that needed to be resolved. Also, it is in a New York since archaeological sensitive area, so a phase-one B archaeological report should probably be submitted for the vacant lot.
Teresa, what, the, on the map, the lot two is getting access from Coolidge Road, and it's going right over the utility easement?
It appears to be, yes.
Yeah.
Utility easement is for the lot to the east.
Oh, a lot, not part of this, yeah.
Right.
They're underground, but water.
The board may remember, if I may, if Teresa's.
Yeah, we covered it.
I will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, Wayne Bruino, Shaymore Sensigum Bruino, on behalf of the applicant. First of all, this board has seen a version of this subdivision before, several times, starting in two thousand and two, when this and the property to the east was all one subdivision map. They were trying to take the two single and separate parcels, combine them to get four lots. The parcel to the east has two dwellings and a garage apartment on it. The subdivision that the board reviewed at that time was seeking basically to create this lot identical to what you see here and to do something similar on the east.
So, four lots.
Four lots in ti-, in total. And this board, in your pre-appreciation report, you know, recognized the need, because both parcels get narrow at certain points, needed lot width variances, and because this prop, the two properties shared the fifty feet of frontage on Coolidge, neither of which have forty feet by themselves, would need the lot frontage variance and so on. That was in your pre-app report. They subsequently went to the zoning board of appeals, and then over the years, there was a discussion. I think issues arose with the applicant, with the Health Department. It didn't proceed. It resurfaced in two thousand and seventeen. Oh, and by the way, during the report in two thousand and two, the referrals made to the Conservation Board, and they said there's no environmental concerns on the property at that time.
That was twenty-one years ago.
Right, okay. In two thousand and seventeen, it resurfaced back, same four lot division, and the planning board adopted a new report to make new referrals. Conservation Board this time came back and said, number one, they had, there's no jurisdiction with respect to wetlands, because it's more than two hundred feet from any wetlands, and more importantly, it's across the street from a paved road. That was number one. Number two is, the Conservation Board did have objections to creating more density, and that was in recognition that this parcel would have the two dwellings and remained, and thus, with four dwellings already on the property, they thought by creating another lot would be five, and therefore, that shouldn't happen. That was a recommendation. And lastly, they had recommended IA systems to be required for all new improvements. Notably, there was nothing about any vegetation or otherwise on, in that report either, and the planning board adopted the report accordingly. And the planning board adopted the report accordingly and did not say anything about the vegetation, both in two thousand two or two thousand three. In two thousand nineteen, you renewed that pre-application report, but I believe what happened was the, because of density and everything else over here or and/or the requirement the health department typically has, you have to upgrade every septic system. So I think for whatever it is, the Freddie family then said, we're just settling this lot and that's when our client acquired it and he's now proceeding with the two lot subdivision, which is identical to the layout that you saw on all the maps before. That being said, I just want to point out, the planning board, while this is going on, in two thousand sixteen, this property right here came before the board, went through the entire process and nothing was said about any vegetation. There was no conditions and you approved the two lot subdivision here, notably the woods on, on the west. Similarly, this property here came before the board in two thousand six, approved the subdivision, not, again, not an issue about any vegetation or otherwise. And the reason why I'm raising this is because you gotta read the conservation board report closely. I think there's, um, some unsubstantiated allegations or, or very broad suggestions that the trees on this property, um, are of some importance, more so than any other property that you've looked at in Hampton Bays. That being said, this property, we submitted this application on June first. When I saw this report, I went back to my client, he sent me pictures and in fact, it is documented, it was cleared. The trees in, in the rear portion of lot two were cleared. And they were cleared in January or February of this year.
By your client?
By our client, before any application came before this board. So the only issue is our map, which was based on a survey in two thousand nineteen, says wooded area here. So our map is inaccurate and we'll represent that to you. We're not in the aquifer protection overlay district. I've looked over every records I could find to find anything, any suggestion that the trees on this property were of any significance and require preservation or otherwise. We've had public hearings on this, the neighbors have not asked for buffering. There's nothing suggesting that. Their properties, they're not subject to any regulations. They can go in and clear a hundred percent of the trees as it said. More importantly is this history, which is available, um, to the town and the conservation board. You just start with, on the GIS, nineteen sixty-two, this property was cleared, probably a hundred percent, except for perhaps a fringe here. You can then see that on the nineteen seventy-six aerial, again.
Bring those up.
Sure, I can also give you copies here. So this was, and it's hard because of the scale on the sixty-two, but you can see, this is the property in here. And it's pretty much clear. In fact, I think there might have been a structure in the vicinity back, on the back part of the property in sixty-two. This is nineteen seventy-six and of course, the lot lines don't necessarily match everything because that barn was on the other property. But you can see there really is, and there's spattering of perhaps successional growth, but not the trees that you see, that subsequently. And admittedly, trees just like that are on the adjacent property and on the front of the property. So the trees down here on lot one haven't been touched. It's only up in this area, which is primarily in the building envelope, were cleared. So the other thing as was mentioned, that the headwaters, and interestingly, the conservation board calls it Wells Creek. Is it Smith's Creek or Wells?
I think it's.
Either way, either way, when you look the proximity of it and, and the proximity of this property and where the clearing is, we're five hundred feet from where the crow flies from the nearest water body. And that is through, um, the house that the conservation board approved for that property immediately south, on the headwaters, so to speak, if you want to call it. Conservation board approved the house on that location. And, and then you got, as the crow flies, actually, you got all these other houses and our house in between where that would be where these trees are.
Wait, is there, I don't see a house across the street.
I think he's referencing his home.
That one, right there. That's all one parcel.
I believe it was built in two thousand and two.
Yeah, but you could see where the water is, it's down to the south of that, further to the south.
So I just, I just want to clarify.
We will have, the summary of this is, is I think that this board should recognize, uh, that the conservation board's goals, although laudable, there is no authority for this board to request a revegetation or a buffer here.
Well, it would be nice if the applicant agreed.
And I can tell you, he hasn't.
I just want to go through your history here. Because you referred to several applications to the east and to the west where homes were built. It doesn't seem to me that, that those lots were devoid of vegetation.
No, in fact, they had the vegetation.
They do. So this property.
But you're then conditioned on them keeping that vegetation.
That was when, in two thousand two?
Two thousand and six.
Okay, it's a long time ago. You know, there's not gonna be a tree standing by the time we're finished developing. The issue here is that your applicant does not want to revegetate. Is that it?
He cleared the trees so he can build a house just like everybody else in Hampton Bays.
How much did he clear, the entire property?
No, he only cleared that wooded portion over here on lot two. Everything else, by the way, the understory was not native. It was probably cleared for the most part. And he hasn't cleared anything on lot one, but most of it is, is you can notice some of the trees are ornamental trees.
Teresa, can you zoom in a little bit, please?
Absolutely.
Would, would you want some sort of planted, like a privacy buffer or something?
There's already a stockade fence by the neighbor along the.
This is twenty, twenty.
This is twenty twenty-two.
The big trees.
Okay. These trees?
Mm-hmm.
They're the neighbor's trees?
They're not his.
Oh, these down here are our, our, our client's trees?
No, no, the, the tall trees. They're not his.
These?
Yeah.
Yeah, these are trees that are down in this location. So I'm told. This is looking south.
We're gonna have to go do a site visit.
It's, it's looking like in this direction.
Have you, have you been, Teresa, to this?
Yes, I drive by this all the time. Yeah. Um, if I may.
Please.
Uh, I was with the environment division while the conservation prepared these comments. Initially, with respect to the Freddie application, their overarching concern was the increase in residential density. So that was their focus on that particular referral. With respect to the current referral and the recognition that, you know, the recommendation with respect to trees is the recognition that there is a broader, um, need to address various, um, environmental factors like climate change and, and, you know, carbon, carbon sequestration through, uh, you know, vegetation. And, you know, it, it may seem like a small thing on this lot, but when you do it over a long and large, you know, over various projects, it adds to a cumulative total. In fact, I think there was a proposal on the federal level at some point to plant like a billion trees recently. So overarching goals of, of doing the little things that we can to address these larger problems, it all adds up to a cumulative effect. And I believe that is the reason the conservation board prepared the comments the way that they did. Again, with respect to the Freddie application, their main concern was the increase in density here. And then obviously, um, they had recommended IA septic systems, but this health department now put in a wall, says you gotta put in mine septic systems. So that's, um, those are the requirements. But again, just to address the comments regarding the buffers and the trees and the revegetation, it's, it's to recognize that there has to be little, little steps to, to, to try and address these larger issues. And this is a baby step that everybody can take to, to try and improve those issues.
Yeah, I mean, I live in Hampton Bays and I'm seeing that a lot and we've just approved two applications today for subdivisions, you know, where, so it's like the death of a thousand cuts kind of thing. So, um, you know, looking at residential density in that area and looking at, um, clearing restriction requirements, you know, maybe as a recommendation to the town board would be a good idea. And, you know, and then we can consider each individual application, but also the cumulative impact.
East Hampton has a tree ordinance, has a tree.
There has been some discussion and some draft legislation was prepared, but, um, I don't know where it, it fell with the town board.
Janice was working on some legislation for it?
Yes, I believe Janice and Marty were working on some legislation. I believe they presented to the board, but I, I don't know if there was enough, enough support at the time.
No, not, not, you mean the town board?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it gets support here. Um.
So there's no clearing limit currently on the board for this property?
Absolutely no authority for this board to impose any clearing restriction. And there's no nexus to any other scientifically documented or, or noticed restriction or, as they indicate here, key forested watershed land. Where is the document that put every land owner on notice that this is a key forested watershed land that needs some sort of attention, let alone protection? There's none. You just recognize that if you, something needs to be done, you gotta do it fairly and consistently with all landowners, not just picking out, cherry picking one landowner at a time and requiring this. This requires some sort of town board legislation, not this landowner to, to try to solve global warming on his property.
Well, we all have to do our share. Don't you think so, Wayne?
I do.
Okay.
But do it in a legislative manner. Require it that way. We don't have the authority now.
Neither do.
And by the way, they say unauthorized clearing. There's nothing that is required. It was allowed. He did it.
He cleared.
The only issue, the only issue is our map doesn't reflect the current condition because the survey was done in two thousand nineteen. Our final map, which this is a pre-app for recommendations for the final, will show the current conditions. And the question in the end is, based on that current conditions and everything else, what authority would you have to impose a buffer? Especially when you didn't do it on the adjoining property, which has more woods than this parcel.
You know, we're looking at this, Wayne. We're not looking at the adjoining property, which is apples to oranges. It's different.
Well, no, no, this is part of the key block of wooded vegetation that was recognized by him.
Did your applicant go in and clear cut this after he filed the subdivision?
No, he did it in January. This application was submitted in June.
I, I think we have, as a board, we, we could ask for applicants to be agreeable to making some changes, to building differently despite the fact that we don't have the zoning code to support it. But that doesn't mean we can't ask.
You can ask all you want, but I'm just letting you know that he's, he cleared it for a purpose and he's not necessarily gonna restrict particularly lot one and, you know, the whole point is lot one, we want an IA system. So they've designed and submitted an application to the health department with an IA system. This recommendation, which conservation and, and is being suggested you adopt, is saying, go redesign that whole thing and put it in a different location to keep a tree over here. And that, we're not, we're not gonna do that. I'm just letting you know that, that the client is not gonna do that.
Is, Teresa, maybe you can, or Wayne, either, I mean, did he clear eighty percent of the lot? Did he clear ninety-nine percent of the lot?
He could clear, he's legally allowed to clear.
I'm just curious how much he did.
It looks like on the back, he cleared practically everything but a tree or two.
Part of it was pre-existing, but the remaining vegetation was entirely cleared.
And do you have to have a building permit or anything before you clear?
You know, that, that's a little bit unclear because in theory, you're supposed to have a building permit when you do clearing.
Right. There's nothing in, no, that's not true.
Right, I, I mean, on a.
Show me the section that says that. There's none.
Quiet children.
Sorry. Um, no, no clearing, no permit is required for clearing in Hampton Bays or other areas like they don't have clearing restrictions. Um, but if it was more than an acre, yes, that, that would be a SWIP, you know, that requirement. But it is not the case that it was less than an acre, probably.
Yes.
Twenty-five thousand, seven hundred feet, right.
And the two lots will both be over the R twenty zone. I mean, you're not looking for, you have a twenty-one thousand square foot lot and a twenty-nine thousand.
Yeah, the only relief we're looking for, by the way, and thank you, Teresa, for addressing, I haven't seen what you wrote, but, you know, part of the planning board's report is, and you did in the past, is address the zoning conformance, which in this case, and we filed an application again, to repeat the variances that were granted for these two lots, is the frontage. This has thirty-three point seven nine feet where forty feet is required.
Coolidge is town road?
Coolidge is a town road.
And that utility easement that I think Maggie mentioned, does that?
Because the garage has its water line and its electric lines crossing our property. And if Freddie sold, the, the same thing down here, this other shaded area, is because they brought a water line in and it crosses onto our property and it goes to the back dwelling. So that, that exists. Our client is, is getting rid of the improvements. He's not gonna use, he's getting rid of the driveway being shared with the neighbor. He's keeping the driveway on the west.
So he has documents and easements.
These are on, they're, they're listed, utilities, they're gonna stay, they're gonna keep, that's for the neighbor to maintain his utilities on our property.
Wayne, question, couldn't you throw a twenty-foot flag on the east side to keep it out of the ZVA variance?
No, because the, the lot width, it's a hundred, it's a hundred twenty feet right now. In fact, the existing dwelling is, is less than a hundred and twenty feet.
And to be honest, we don't really need another, another driveway on Springville.
No, no, it would just be for legal frontage. There'd be no access.
This is also around a, a pretty steep, you know, fast curve, so I don't know if you'd want another driveway there.
It wouldn't be used for vehicles.
So this would have no frontage?
Oh, okay.
But it would, it would make them out conforming to the lot.
Oh, right, right, right.
It has thirty, what did I say, thirty-three point seven nine feet of frontage on the town road.
Just curious, when you, when you remove that driveway, it's going towards the back of lot two, which seems to feed into that apartment building or garage apartment?
Right.
Where's their access gonna be then?
That's their problem, yeah.
From the, within the property.
Tucker people to the east. Wait, which driveway?
You're talking about the driveway that accesses the garage with the apartment?
So I guess they have to create access to get to that.
Yeah, that entire driveway and curbs which are out there, um, is gonna be removed. And this part of the driveway is being removed and this part, if anything, I think there's gonna be a discussion with this landowner. I suspect is that there'll be a little access easement because there's a building here and they may need the width, but it's only a small portion.
Because it's encroaching on the other part?
Their driveway, the neighbor's driveway, which this, these people use, there's no instrument that documented ever, but they use this driveway for this property and that, that is encroaching on our property. And the report says get rid of the encroachments.
Right.
And you can see there is an extra driveway over on this property, whether it's encroaching on the neighbors, but they can, they can provide access from here because this appears to be a circular driveway and they can provide access this way.
So our concern with the, um, property to the west, you have issue with number six in the light of extensive unauthorized clearing. You're saying that they don't need authorization to clear.
It wasn't unauthorized. So it shouldn't have any reflection of whether it's authorized or unauthorized. The issue for you should be, what is important about buffering the land to the west?
And the authorization only comes by way of legislation. So as I said, you're feeling frustrated listening to this go on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I know, I know we're gonna have this conversation twenty more times.
Wayne Bruino is a very strong advocate for his clients. I appreciate his advocacy.
I understand that, but knowing that we're gonna hear this twenty more times probably this year.
Let's move on. We have to get that legislation.
It's not a matter of moving on so much as it is, um, making change.
Yeah.
It only comes by way of legislation.
Right.
And we've been through this a number of times and my head always wants to pop off my shoulders despite my calm demeanor. When, when, what can we do as a board to push that to the town board to say, please take a look at this, we have a problem?
We're gonna talk at the end of this meeting because we, we've, you know, that resolution from the last meeting went through. And we think that, Janice and I think that, and Teresa, think that you should have like, an issue discussion with us that we then can take to the town board.
I love that.
More, you know, more informally, instead of like a resolution thing. So it could include additional clearing restrictions, which I'm hearing on this application, but obviously won't affect this application, but future applications.
I mean, the sustainability committee has been asking the town board for some sort of relief from the fact that in your, in non-APOD, you could just strip the land.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So I'm gonna, we'll finish this project up and we'll have a small conversation at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
I think that that makes sense.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to point out, I'm, I'm a village attorney in a couple of locations where the villages have been trying to tackle this issue. And tree clearing, a tree ordinance, many places do that. I would, it, it's not easy, but the biggest issue is the enforcement aspect. And the other part is the clearing as you deal with revege all the time, is being able to prove or disprove, you know, Just being able to prove or disprove, you know, what was cleared or not cleared. Hampton Bays has been there a long time and a lot of these developed properties, you may have trees, but you may not have the understory where the protection of the aquifer was about disturbance of the natural vegetation. So how do you prove or disprove, you know, anybody had this or not is, is, is something. So just keep that in the mind.
Well, I do think that's a little bit easier to address now that we have, you know, better technology, aerial photographs, pictometry, where you can kind of get a better feel for that. I mean, obviously, nothing is as good as having surveys and visual inspections, but there is a little bit easier than it was twenty years ago, thirty years ago.
And to further support that, current planning articles and documents are talking about planting more trees in parking lots, on street, street trees to try to create shade to bring down temperatures which are only rising. And so I think we do need to, as part of that legislation, reinforce that. I mean, we always ask for street trees, but it needs to be really part of, of our mission. So, okay, so let's move on with this. Thank you, Jay, for bringing it.
Just a clarification, you do want to stage one be on Lot Two, right?
Yes.
So are we going to strike items two, six and seven? And eight, six, seven and eight? Or nine?
I just want to point out that, you know, the suggestions, Teresa, I know this is your first round, but the pre-app report is usually making recommendations as to what should be shown on the final maps. And one of the things that typically not shown is building envelopes and clearing limits and things of those sorts. So we certainly can provide a map, but to number four, frankly, there is no clearing limits. You know, do you want a plan that shows existing trees? We can do that, but again, number five wouldn't be appropriate, number six wouldn't be appropriate, number seven.
Maybe, maybe in this case, you just have a separate plan showing that it was cleared? Because now, you, right now, you have a record that shows it was all vegetated, right?
Right.
I think maybe for the record, you have that just as a baseline. But that's, I'm just saying, not on the final map though.
Yeah.
Talking about, maybe I missed it, but seven and eight, talking about conservation easements is, I mean, there's nothing, these don't, that property doesn't have any kind of conservation easement now.
No, nothing.
So we're talking about removing five, six, seven, eight, and nine, and nine.
Well, nine, I just want to clarify, is, well, four, we can give you the separate map to show what trees exist. Five, six, seven and eight don't, you know, it's not going to happen, but number eight, number nine is, for your edification, Teresa's, the final map will be approved by the Health Department. And the only thing will be IA systems, so.
But that's number ten.
Well, that's number nine. Well, you got a newer rig.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I got the older one.
I'm sorry.
I'm confused.
Yeah. So, yeah, number four, which I had on what was sent to me was subdivision.
So seven and one more.
Yeah, it's now the number five. So.
And the IA is number ten. Subdivision.
Yeah, I mean, we'll put a note, but it'll be shown anyway and approved by the Health Department, so, at that point.
Okay, so we're going to revise this.
Yeah, the other thing, Teresa, just want to go back, not that it's relevant because, but you have the calculation for the park requirement, missed the decimal point, it's point zero five acres. So it's five acres for every one hundred lots, times the number of lots, and that comes out to point zero five.
Oh, sorry about that.
But nonetheless, the park fee is based on one lot, so. And of the other comments, you've addressed the variances. I think we're okay.
Okay.
So just back to Coolidge real quick, the requirement is you need, what, forty feet?
You need either forty feet and a frontage or twenty feet and a flag, and since you can't really technically make a flag here because you don't have any depth of the frontage.
Right.
So we have thirty-three point seven nine feet where we need forty, we're asking for six point two one foot variance on the frontage requirement. But more importantly, under state law, we have fifteen feet, which is the minimum necessary for access.
Right.
So we meet all those requirements. The zoning board has previously given variances for the frontage for the two lots.
Right.
So what's the general feeling, Wayne, with easements underneath roads? Is that typical?
Easements under which?
I mean, utility.
Driveway.
They're underground utilities, they're not overhead. And they were put in place when the Freddie sold it to them.
Yeah.
Now, the interesting thing, we looked specifically, the question you raised was, well, how's this, does this guy have a right to cross the property and he doesn't? Only the utilities. And the similar thing here was, like, why, why does this have such a strange shape if they were proposing to allow this driveway to remain? And again, it's only the utility primarily, and it's shown the water main that goes across that area. So that's going to stay, doesn't hurt anybody, that's going to stay, but I think we need to address this driveway encroachment, which is being asked. It may be that we resolve it with another easement just in that location because they have their house here and I don't know if there's going to be enough width for them to continue using that.
Right, they're not going to, right, they're not going to have enough width onto Coolidge, are they?
Well, they won't either, but that's, they're not looking to subdivide, yeah, but they were giving a variance in the past as well.
Well, they can ask, they have sixteen point two one feet or whatever.
Okay, so, so this all has to be amended.
Do you want to do a fresh one for the next meeting?
Yeah, much better. Yeah, let's do a fresh one. So no action.
So I think you, are you on deadline?
Um. Okay, thank you. Thanks for our questions.
If you're on deadline, we.
We'll just make it fresh, Shinkley, you wouldn't have to come, we just stopped it for the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need to accept some motion?
Um.
Excellent.
Yeah. Extension to September twenty eighth.
Correct.
Extension to, so, moved by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor. Proposed extensions, seven in favor. Okay, Teresa, number five, Turtle Cove.
We can't ask for conservation easements.
Could you change anything in the report?
That one, I just realized, I have the typo for the park thing, so that'll have So the next application, it's seventy-seven Turtle Cove Drive, it's located at seventy-seven Turtle Cove Drive in North Sea. It is the application to re-divide the two parcels. The parcels were located once like this, back to back, and they were merged because they were non-conforming to the zoning. It's opposed, the proposed action is type two, seeker. We received various comments from fire prevention, conservation, landmarks, and the Health Department.
Teresa, you have Hampton Bays Fire District on the report.
Oh, okay, I'll fix that, sorry about that.
North Sea, yes, I'm assuming we let it ascend to North Sea.
Yeah, yes, it was, I'm sorry about that.
Cut and pastish.
We also received comments with respect to, from the DEC, apparently there are endangered northern Longyear Bay within a mile and a half of the subject property. And so they are recommending some restrictions on the property. So I'll go over the recommendations now. It should, the subdivision map should be noted that proposed Lot Two will be served by public water and a new IA septic system. Some recent clearing has been completed at site without, on the northerly property line, and that should be revised. And we should have a base map that shows the full extent of clearing part from a subdivision. Conservation is recommending that a buffer be prepared, be established on proposed Lot Two. Let me go back to say that just exactly two hundred feet from this northern property line, there are wetlands to the north. Let me see if I can pull it up. So there is a pond right here. It's an extensive freshwater wetland, it extends into groundwater. And as per the conservation board, it is just two hundred feet from the property line. So at this time, they're not recommending that the wetlands be flagged and shown on the subdivision because it is technically outside of jurisdiction, but they are recommending establishment of a buffer here along these northerly property lines as described in item four. And this, and then also limiting the clearing on proposed Lot Two to sixty percent.
I mean, this is in the APOD, so what would the?
No, this is not in the.
It's not APOD. Really? The type priority, water quality.
It's on the other side of Longyear Bay.
Yes, that's correct, it's on the north side. And there's some recent disturbance right here that they are recommending, you know, be revegetated as part of a buffer. And then also, the DEC is recommending establishing a tree cutting window for allowance of tree cutting between December first and February twenty-eighth of any calendar year.
Teresa, a question, isn't the theme a flood zone X, ten?
It's in X.
X, meaning.
Which is the, which is the highest?
It's the lowest.
Lowest.
It's a lowest.
Lowest, lowest percentage of flooding.
Okay.
The only, only thing less than X is being outside of the flood zone altogether.
What's the highest?
VE.
V, V?
VE, as in Victor Eric.
B, B E.
V, Victor Eric.
Right, so VE has the highest potential of flooding, then AE, then X inside the five hundred, X outside the five hundred, and then completely outside of the flood zone.
Okay, okay. Because I think we have to be so aware of that these days, given the increased rainfall.
So I guess the main question here is whether or not we want to proceed with the establishment of clearing restrictions on proposed Lot Two and the establishment of buffers on both properties.
Do we know if the house on Lot One is going to stay?
The house on Lot One is going to stay, is my understanding.
So given the area, it's within our authority to do so, right? Unlike the other application, we just looked at.
I mean, again, technically, there are no clearing restrictions, so it's not in jurisdiction of wetlands, so you, you know, you are not required to put in a buffer, but you are in close proximity to Turtle Cove, you've got these, these pockets of wetlands here that are, that are groundwater fed.
Yeah, this is a different ball, I mean, here you have existing vegetation.
Right.
That we can preserve, so.
So we can buffer, we can keep that.
We secure buffers both in and out of the APOD.
Right.
And here, it's clearly warranted and, I think, what do you recommend?
I would recommend putting, putting them in.
How many?
I would recommend putting them in as recommended.
How many, how many feet?
Uh, he is recommending, the conservation board is recommending, that doesn't seem right, hold on one second.
Thirty, twenty-five, thirty?
Um, so Conservation had recommended that Lot One have a twenty-foot buffer along the northerly lot line and thirty foot on Lot Two. It said in the area of the garage, it should be reduced to eighteen on proposed Lot One, but if you actually look at the subdivision map, that you just can't, that's not possible.
Yeah.
Because it's, it is less than that. It's like, it's like fourteen, sixteen feet on, on the, on the subdivision map.
Maybe twenty feet throughout, just to be consistent.
Okay, and then, and then eight, fifteen on, on the side of the garage.
On the garage, yeah, you have to allow some space to.
You're starting to affect the building.
Yeah, yeah, for maintenance and access.
Okay.
So we're thinking twenty feet the whole length except for fifteen by the garage.
Okay.
Do you know when that, when that, when that clearing occurred?
I don't know, unfortunately.
Was it before they filed applications or after they filed?
I don't know.
Because we had the same issue you talked about before, requiring people to, was it in fact unauthorized or did they have, was this guy before any application?
Right. My understanding is that it is a very small area as opposed to the previous application where it was a very large area. So, you know, it is recommended that any portions of the clearing that were recently done within the buffer just be allowed to restore back to natural vegetation because it's such a small area.
Be allowed to naturally restore it?
Yes, naturally restored.
So, yeah, just to distinguish, I agree with these recommendations, and I guess like that's where the distinction between the two applications was, where it says recommendation that this needs to be restored versus we acknowledge the Conservation Board's comments and recommend that it be restored. So to keep those as part of the record, I think, is important, although we don't have the jurisdiction to require it.
Right.
So it's a REC versus a REC.
Right.
And I think going forward, it would be important for us to just keep those in the record.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Of recommendations.
I think we should push as much as we can if we have a willing applicant. That's great. If you don't, well then.
There's nothing preventing us legally from making a recommendation.
Nope.
For, for what?
Making recommendations, just how, finding. And we can adopt that recommendation into our reports and build the case.
Is this for the?
It's not a condition to recommend.
Right. These are, these are pre-apps, right? So you can make all sorts of recommendations at the end of the day, at the final stage where it's demonstrated.
Is this for the buffer?
If this, if the zoning code doesn't support it, then we can't make the applicant.
No, but they can, you know, if, if, if they see that's something that they can offer as mitigation for whatever else, that's an option, that gives them an option for some additional mitigation on, on other, other aspects of the buffer.
And for, for us to include that as part of our recommendations and build the case that it's not, the recommendations are not being taken builds the case for us to work with the town board to legislate it, is what I'm saying. I think it's an important juncture.
To document and recommend.
Exactly.
So do you want to put the archaeological review as a recommendation or they understand that?
I believe that, didn't I not put that in there?
It's, yeah, it's in a sensitive area.
It's in there, but it's not in the recommendations.
Yes, I'll add, I apologize.
And do they need anything for SWIP because it's stormwater management zone?
They're not going to be, they're not going to over-clear, they're not going to meet the threshold of a one acre because it's under twelve thousand square feet.
So seven is the logical reason. Okay. Is someone here for Turtle Cove? No?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Any other questions on this pre-app review?
Move to adopt the report.
Move to adopt the report by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor.
Bye.
All in suspension, seven in favor. Thank you, Teresa. Do you have more?
Yes, I do. The next one is item ten.
One oh three.
We're, that was being extended until September twenty eighth. You've received a copy of the report for discussion purposes only, but again, I believe we're going to discuss it after following morning.
Okay.
They need a motion to extend.
So we need a motion to extend this, number ten, one oh three, County Road thirty-nine A.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kate, second by Craig. Extending to nine twenty-eight, September twenty-eight. If I may, I don't know if this is in order, but I'm not going to be at that meeting. And I had notes to discuss with the applicant that there really needs to be a lot more sustainability in that building. It's a brand-new building, it's going to be doctor's offices. If any building should be as green as possible, it should be within the scope of the allowability within the current code, which I know doesn't really exist, but I just want to make that statement since I will be here.
Christina, we allow that.
Theresa, continue.
Are we allowed to read a letter on behalf of an absent board member?
Are you allowed during a public?
Yeah, so if Glorian wants to, you know, has, you know.
It's not a public hearing though. If it were a public hearing, she could send it in or whatever. Right now it's very informal.
Right.
Yeah, but if I say it, at least my other board members may.
Yeah, here, and Theresa's here.
You can send Theresa an email so she has that.
Yeah, yeah, I will.
She can push her part or review.
This is the Priestex suburb.
Yes, this is Priestex Burger King.
The Burger King, yeah.
That's what's sitting there for a while.
It's had several applications on.
It's been, it's been before the board several times at this level.
A bunch of times, yeah.
That was the silo one.
And this was the issue where all the park, where all the parking was indicated in front.
In the front.
At the public hearing, we spoke to the representative that this is not how we want to design site plans. We want to put the parking behind.
Where is it? Did they move it behind?
No, this was, it was just a, it was a pre-submission conference. So this, this is just going, we're just going to adopt the report and the report does have that recommendation, yes.
The building is pretty modern and spectacular and it's way back in the corner. So they made the recommendation to move it forward and put the parking behind there.
I thought your report was pretty comprehensive.
Oh, thank you.
We asked for cross-access.
Is that road behind Burger King?
But it stops at a certain point, like cross-access, yeah.
Yeah, because of the prior district thing, yeah.
Okay. So my next one is two fifteen.
Did we take the motion?
We didn't do the mill.
We didn't accept.
Okay, motion to extend one oh three County Road thirty-nine A to September twenty-eighth, motion by?
It was Kate in front.
Kate did the motion.
Kate took Greg, Ali, and Dunk.
We didn't vote on it though. We just, we got the motion to vote.
Motion, so let me just repeat, the motion was by Kate, second by Craig, all in favor?
Kate. I second.
Greg.
Aye.
All with extension seven in favor.
Thanks.
Two fifteen, that was, yes, this is two fifteen, South Highway. It's a subdivision, number thirteen on your agenda.
Number four. Yep.
If you want to take a look at it now.
Thank you.
Um.
Yep.
This is a application for pre, a pre-subjection subdivision, and the application is deemed complete. So we're just scheduling a public hearing. I believe it is for October.
October.
Twelve.
October twenty-sixth, October twenty-sixth.
So it's complete, scheduling a hearing for October twenty-fifth.
Twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth, yep.
Twenty-sixth?
Yes.
So this makes it by one foot, Arc One, forty thousand and one feet.
Yes, but the, the, one of the lots does require variance because the flagship.
What's next to that?
What is, what is?
Uh, this is over here. Hold on, let me get the.
This is.
Is that, is that?
It's right, it's right next to the, almost right next to the new CPI, the refurbished CPI.
Is it residential?
It is residential.
Residential between what and what?
So this is the canoe place in, and then these are residential lots, and then this is the awning.
Oh, yes, Brock awning.
Yep, Brock awning. So this is the last of the residential pieces here.
Oh, what, what variance do they need?
They're going to need lot area variance.
So is this piece carved out at all? I mean, is this H C, it's, it's.
Residential.
It remains a residential lot in the midst of highway business?
Let me see.
The highway business is across the street, right?
I believe so.
But what's to the east there? What, that, is that a commercial site?
Yeah, that's like an awning company or something.
This is H B, and then these are three residential lots, and then this, this was part of the P D D.
Okay, so, so it's next to, to two residential lots. But what is, what is the building on the, one immediately to the west?
This one?
Yeah.
This is the Brock awning and the marine, marine supply store, I believe. Maybe even electrician now, I don't, you know. I drive by it every day.
The awning company, right.
Focused on getting to the traffic.
Yeah, the cones and the cops.
Yeah, but this, this is a house, and this is a house, this is the vacant parcel, and this is the commercial business.
Why is the rear lot over twenty thousand square feet and why is it twenty-seven sixty-six over?
Because of the flag.
The flag.
What about the flag?
You include the area of the flag.
Takes out of the forty thousand total.
Right.
But the overall area?
In theory, in theory, they should meet the, the lot size requirement. However, because of the flag, in order to get access to the back, they had to take it from the front lot.
The whole property is forty thousand and one square feet. So when you take the flag driveway out.
But the flag is part of the lot area.
Right, but it's going to Lot Two.
Right, so why is Lot, why does, why don't we move the rear lot line from Lot One closer to Lot Two?
I think it becomes an issue of whether or not they have a conforming building envelope.
Building envelope?
I don't have the map. Why didn't I pull up the map?
You can still pull it up.
Oh, you mean it might encroach into the setbacks?
I believe so, yes. See, because you can see this is the building envelope. Let me zoom in. So this is already the building envelope. It's oddly shaped and it's kind of small.
Oh, okay.
So if you push.
If you push the lot further back, you'd wipe out their building envelope.
Well, it just stopped right on Montauk Highway.
It's kind of weird though.
Yeah.
You can tip, because you, sorry.
Well, you can choose your front.
You can choose your front.
But I think they're choosing their front from the railroad tracks.
They're choosing the rear.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I hope they like the sound of the tracks.
But that would make it worse if they had the front on the rail. Oh, then they could move it back clear, right?
Yeah, they could make it, they could make it the other way.
Well, but is it really going to make it that much of a difference? You just ended up flipping it and you.
Or you'd have a longer.
What are we trying, what are we trying to do?
wider building perimeter.
Discussion.
Yeah, we can, we can look at that. This is for completeness, right?
Yes, it's for completeness.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, pre-app.
It's for completeness and to set a hearing for October twenty-sixth, no motion?
Motion.
Motion by Glorian, second by Dennis, all in favor, opposed extension seven in favor. Number sixteen, ninety-six Wiltshire Street, North City, County Road thirty-nine A.
Listen, I'm just thinking about all the people who used to call me.
Yes, so my next one is ninety-six Wiltshire. Which is number sixteen.
Theresa.
Adjacent, adjacent to the board.
So ninety-six Wiltshire.
Did you distribute the reports?
Yes, there's actually no report. This is also to deem the application for pre-submission conference complete. They are seeking to create a plant nursery storage area on a residential lot, I believe. So we're just deeming the application complete and scheduling a public hearing for October twelfth.
What's the zoning here? Is it residential?
R fifteen, correct. You should note that this small corner right here is in the village.
Is the village, so they have to be notified as well.
Yes, as part of the secret.
Got to go to the planning commission too.
Right, but this is for pre-submission conference, so not at this stage, but eventually, yes.
Yep.
Okay, motion is deemed complete.
That's, that's an allowable use there?
Yes, unfortunately. Well, not unfortunately, no, that's not, that's not the right, that's not the right phrasing. Yes, it is allowed use, but it is a residential neighborhood and it's going to be somewhat tight.
What?
So we've done, you've done one prior, the Garden Depot up on Old Country Road in Spion.
Spion, yeah, yeah, I know, yeah.
So it's, it's a farm. It's supposed to be a farm.
Yeah.
So that's, so there's going to be some control to make that, make sure that farm operation is accommodated from residential zones.
Do you have an area of this, Theresa?
Different than, it's not a nursery, I mean.
It's not, it's, it's, there's.
Not a nursery, nursery, not a garden center nursery, not at all.
No, it's just their storage.
Plant nursery is growing trees, growing and storage of trees.
Or other plants.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
No retail sale.
No.
No retail sales.
So there's like probably activity in the early morning and late afternoon for like load in and returning of trucks.
Right, but it's a one and a half acre piece of property, so it should be that active too, so.
I guess we could ask them, but if they're not actually growing them there, it's like a way. Actually here.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Oh, sir.
Sorry, sorry. Oh, just go on to identify yourself.
It's pretty disturbed right now, like what's happening there right now?
You could sit up.
They got a violation.
Tell us your name.
Peter Grealish.
Peter Grealish?
Grealish.
G R E?
G R E A L I S H.
And are you the owner?
Yes.
Welcome.
Couple of things I'd like to point out is that I, I have spent a lot of time and effort in protecting the neighbors from the operation. I planted fifty arbivide, eighteen-foot arbivide there, about six feet wide and eighteen feet tall. You'll see that on the north end of the property there. That whole tree line was not there when I started the operation. So if you go down that road, you can't see, I'm protecting the neighbors from, and plan to continue that planting as you go to the end of the property to the west and back down. There are some cedar trees there now, but they're not really sufficient as far as screening that neighbor out to the west of me. On the other side, it's all highway frontage, so it's not really bothering any residential people. And then there's a commercial building right there. It's the old print shop.
Oh, yeah.
So there's really, I'm really not bothering anybody to the south. And everybody to the north seems to be happy with what I'm doing and the use of the property. I'm getting no complaints from, from my neighbors because they know that I'm trying to protect, you know, and keep noise down and not really disturb anybody. I'm very conscious of that. And this is not, I have a tree business and I'm not running my, I'm not trying to run my operation out of there. I have another location for that. This is for, for my use of plant material for, basically for job sites.
Right, so this is like state, you're bringing the material there, staging it there for a couple of days and then taking it out.
Well, what, I, I also have very big equipment, tree spades and things like that, and I'm in the tree business. And sometimes people are cutting trees, want to cut a tree down, and I actually want to take the tree and save the tree and try to, you know, market the tree to somebody else rather than chopping it down. I mean, I just heard you talking recently about that, you know, saving trees and so on and so forth. So I believe that's what I'm actually in the business of trying to do here.
Maybe wait, it's quiet, would like some.
So, this is just again to deem it complete and schedule for public hearing. Obviously, there'll be some further discussion after the public hearing closes and the comment period is over and a report is drafted.
But it's good to know a little bit.
Again, it's just for plant nursery and again, complete application.
So is this actually a public hearing or pre-submission conference?
It's a conference.
Pre, I'm sorry, pre-submission conference.
Sorry, yeah.
I'm seeing it on your, on your report, but you.
Yeah, so it's not deemed a complete, it's actually got the prerequisites to actually schedule a pre-submission conference. Yeah, yeah. But there's, you know, everything, it's got its own terminology here, so.
Right.
So we'll see.
And we'll have an opportunity to talk with this gentleman.
And you'll present it to the public.
October twelve, right?
The public hearing is October twelfth and then we'll have a part of discussion at some point.
I know that it is permitted use for the property, that's why I bought the property. So I didn't, I actually didn't know that I needed a, a change of, I guess this is basically what this is, is a change of use of the property?
Yes.
What I'm applying for?
Yes. Yeah, you'll have a, you'll have a C E O that's his partners.
Okay.
But this is an opportunity for neighbors to come and comment on it.
Right.
You'll make a presentation and then we'll hear from people if they come.
And is it my responsibility to make them aware of the meeting?
Yes, we'll, we'll talk to you after.
Okay.
I think I've got a couple more things to do.
Claire will give you.
But we will, Theresa will talk to you. It's a couple posters. We'll be in touch.
Right, okay.
Okay?
We're good?
Yes.
Good, good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. That's helpful.
Okay, so a motion to set this pre-submission conference for October twelfth? Motion by Dennis, second by George.
October twelfth?
October twelfth. All in favor, seven in favor.
Claire, can I ask you a question before we move on?
Yes.
So permitted use, nursery. What quantifies nursery? Is it roots in the ground or is it, you know, trees in containers?
That's an amazing question.
And like the equipment storage.
You're so good.
I don't believe so.
Do we have an opposed definition of nursery?
So there has been a recent decision by the building sector, probably based on like maybe precedence in other places, that it's not only roots in the ground, but it is all also bald material.
And equipment storage also?
Yeah, but that's something that I think you do have a lot of discretion on.
Indicate that.
Again, it's a point five.
Right, is it, is it equipment storage for the purposes of maintaining the plants?
What is, what would be normal?
What's the percentage, yeah.
Keeping the plants or is it other equipment?
A parking lot. Because you could use it as a storage yard for a truck.
And do we refer this, do we refer this to ag advisory or do we refer it to anybody?
Absolutely, ag advisory, but at the, that stage of construction.
Yeah.
Ag advisory. Yeah.
I'm not construction, I'm the plant stage.
The actual site plan application, correct.
Right, mm-hmm. Okay, so we've done that.
Good questions.
I think Theresa, you have, oh, you have nineteen, Michael Minkoff.
I gave her a lot of work hours.
No, but that's, so this is pre-submission, it's two ninety-seven County Road thirty-nine. It's a tremendous amount of crap going on.
Okay. Uh, next one is two. I don't even know what the address is, right. Two ninety-seven County Road thirty-nine. It is the former suburban auto garage.
Oh, yes, yep.
They are now looking to get site plan approval to, and a special exception, this is pre-submission conference.
The new Norse excite is here.
Uh, for a special trade contractor's office. So they are proposing a total of twenty-nine parking spaces inclusive of six inside the building. There are six bay doors, so they're not going to be stacked in tandem. There are three in the front and I believe three in the back from what I can recall. So again, this is to schedule a pre-submission conference on October twelfth.
I'm having trouble locating you because the survey says Sabonic Road and County Road thirty.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm.
Yeah, so this is where, this is where.
You know, with the new Norse excite is.
This is where the Sandy Hollow comes out?
The survey's mislabeled. It says Sabonic Road.
Yes. Yes.
Well, it's, they actually, it's actually the name of the North Highway.
North Highway?
In that section.
I've, I've never heard it called Sabonic Road.
In that section, yeah.
So there's a better, better view. These are the industrial-looking, like almost airplane hangar buildings that are currently under construction. I believe it's a.
The old museum. The Norse, yeah, the old auto museum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Their new headquarters.
So this is to the.
This is next to, this is, used to be an auto repair shop.
Okay, so I never drive there, so that's why I don't recognize it.
So it's auto repair shop, right.
It, it was, yes, and I don't, I don't think there's anything active there. I don't, I don't recall.
Again, we have to be concerned about cross-access with this.
To Norse, I don't know.
What's the, the open space to its east, to its west?
This is not open space. This is owned by the Long Island Automobile Collectors.
Okay.
That's the portable toilet warehouse.
Yeah, no, but.
No, or, no, Norse is here.
No, there's.
They bought, they bought.
There's several.
They own everything.
That's another Norse, even though it's Long Island Automobile Collectors.
It's no longer Norse anymore.
Yeah.
Don't.
Is, yeah, that's right.
Oh, yeah, they're gone.
Winter.
Winters, yeah.
Yeah, they sold, who begat.
Yeah, Winter Brothers buying everything now.
So when would the pre-submission be?
There's a cemetery.
It's for October twelfth.
Okay, a motion, set the pre-submission conference, motion by George, second by Tom, all in favor? All opposed. Opposed extensions, seven in favor.
Hi.
Nice work, Theresa.
Yeah, good.
Thank you, Theresa, and thank you for the notes for tonight. That's so helpful.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thanks, Theresa.
Great, can you pass some sugar?
Sugar, sure.
Let's be honest.
We have cupcakes downstairs, you guys will.
Good evening.
Tonight, are we still in session?
Yes.
Yes.
Wait a minute, let me pull the little vodka bottle up first.
There's Jeff.
It fits right in there, I have to know.
Okay, we're going to number two, twenty-eight thirty-two South Beach Road, Schenochak Hills, Jeff?
Good, sure.
Thank you.
So we have twenty-eight thirty-two South Beach Road, it's an application for a lot line modification. Before I forget, Kevin, who's back there? I have, the applicant represented his own Zoom. His name is Phil Butler. This lot line application is requesting to transfer sixteen thousand one hundred eighty-two square feet between the two lots. That's sixteen thousand one hundred eighty-nine square feet, it's coming from tax lot sixteen point ten, which is this lot here, number thirty-two south. And if you reference your map, it's essentially the driveway. So on its, the request itself is pretty straightforward, it's lots located in our sixty zoning, New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area, and also Cultural Resource Protection Overly District in the Schenochak Hills hamlet. The real concerning portions of this request is the conservation easement to the south of the property. If you notice on the conservation easement, there is some structures, a wood, wooden deck path, or wooden steps, as well as staircase on both properties. The conservation board also made comments regarding that, so we can refer to my, to my staff report and resolution as well. We did conduct a public hearing. Yes, if you don't mind. We did perform a public hearing on July thirteenth. It closed with a thirty day written comment period, no comments during the comment period nor during the public hearing. The application was referred out to the fire prevention, who didn't make a recommendation for fire hydrant. They note that the nearest fire hydrant is in excess of thousand two hundred feet from the residence, which is located at twenty, twenty-eight South Beach Road. Then we also have comments from the Southampton Fire District, which did not require any additional fire. And, and, and to be clear, they actually state that the, the address lies within a protected area with public water and fire hydrants, and the board has no recommendations at this time. We also referred out to the town engineer who's requesting and recommending, recommending covenant requiring two inch drainage for all future impervious services. Granted, this requested action, there's no real construction or activity outside of the land transfer associated with it. And then as we move forward, we move down to the conservation board's comments. If you'd like, I can read them into the record as well.
You, you did not attach any of the other referrals to this report?
Yeah, they're all in there.
Am I not seeing them?
It's written into the text. The conservation board is on page two.
Conservation board, I see.
So before that, we have the fire.
Town agent, oh, fire agent.
Fire district.
And the fire district, yeah.
I guess it's not popping out.
No, it's okay, I'm sorry. So I'll go through their comments and recommendations as they are pertinent to some of my recommendations as well.
Jeff, can I just stop you for a moment? These two properties are completely improved.
Yes.
So what, why are they changing the lot lines?
So, good question. So if you look at the map here, originally, it's part of a minor subdivision which included the two lots, which is number twenty, number thirty-two. It came with a common driveway easement where both lots were supposed to access their properties via that common driveway easement. But if you actually notice, lot number twenty-eight actually has direct access onto South Beach Road. Not sure at the time why that wasn't necessarily reflected during the conservation. I assume they just wanted one ingress egress for this particular subdivision, but this property actually accesses their house through this road and has direct access, road frontage.
Do they own that road?
What road?
Do they own that property, the access?
Yeah, they own this property, there's actually no property here.
The access road.
There's actually no property here. And yes, they do own this piece here. So now number twenty owns that portion of the common access driveway.
But you pointed out the other little driveway.
Yes, this right here.
And my question is, do they own the property over which this?
No, there's no property there. I know it looks like it, it's actually, it's town, it's town right of way, let me take away the zoning.
I'm sorry to interject, can, can you guys hear me?
Yes, you can.
Sorry, I can't really hear you, I'm just struggling to hear, so if there's a question, I just want to be able to respond to it.
Sure, absolutely.
Could you state your name?
Yes.
Phil Butler with the law firm, Feral Fritz, for the applicants.
So let me take off the aerial, that might help a bit too. There's actually no property here, this is all the right of way for South Beach Road.
That looks very big.
Right, initially, at first glance, that was going to be my concern, but if you actually look at it, you're right, there's actually nothing there. And again, for whatever reason, it wasn't necessarily addressed at the time of the minor subdivision, but they do have direct access in front on South Beach Road, which would not create any additional violations as part of this action.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you now, thank you.
Okay.
Perfect. So that's the real reason, Gloria.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll read quickly through the conservation board's comments, the more important ones, of course. And we'll jump to number, number three. Yes. Number three in the conservation board comments, on September ninth, two thousand fifteen, the conservation board had denied a conservation management plan, whose approval had been sought pursuant to the filed conservation easement in order to construct a new bulkhead with dead men and tiebacks anchored within the bluff face, within the bounds of the easement, followed by the deposition of nearly fifteen hundred cubic yards of imported sand filled landward of the reconstructed bulkhead and within the easement bounds. The land, the landowner subsequently sought and received trustee approval to construct a freestanding seawall, whose height approaches twelve feet seaward of the easement, thereby negating the need for installation of a dead, of dead men and tiebacks within the easement. Notwithstanding the structural separation, approximately twelve, twelve, one thousand two hundred fifty cubic yards of sand were inappropriately deposited and graded pursuant to the trustee permit, landward of the shore wall and within the bounds of the easement, without obtaining requisite approvals and permits from planning board and conservation board. Despite the easement prohibition of structures, a bluff slash beach access staircase was also constructed. As a consequence, notice of violation was issued two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Subsequent communications on June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen advised applicant that a new conservation and management plan, I believe that should have just been conservation management plan, application need to be submitted to the conservation board in order to rectify these outstanding matters as of today's date. So in short, they applied for a new bulkhead, they were granted a new, a permit for a new bulkhead by the trustees, they constructed the new bulkhead, but as part of the construction process, they imported fill. Now, the legal instrument, the covenant, the grant of easement, conservation easement, did restrict any fill, and it states quoted, "A portion of said real property constitutes an area of natural scenic beauty, and the openness and natural condition of a portion of said real property, if retained, would enhance and present the potential value of the abutting and surrounding properties and would enhance the conservation of natural and scenic resources. The natural resources condition of said premises shall remain undisturbed and its, and in its natural state. To this end, no topsoil, sand, gravel, rocks, or minerals shall be excavated or removed therefrom, no grading shall be conducted on said premises, and no planting or fill shall be placed on said premises, nothing shall be permitted to occur on said premises, et cetera."
So can I ask a question at this point?
Yes.
And Christine, maybe you have the answer, who has jurisdiction here? Is it the trustees over the conservation board or the conservation board over the trustees?
Conservation boards relate from us, right? So trustees would have separate, it might be a joint jurisdictional thing, they'll have to deal with that in terms of the.
Okay.
Well, the easement's to the town.
Right.
So the town has jurisdiction. Town is the enforcement entity for the easement.
So that would be the other question, right, outside of the fill, right, because.
Yeah, it's jurisdiction here, I mean, because one is countering, mending the other.
Right.
I mean, there are instances where you have joint jurisdiction.
To what?
There are instances where we have joint jurisdiction.
Joint jurisdiction, can, is the applicant, can, can you elucidate on that a little bit, or?
Oh, so, yeah, so, so my client, or Angelo, applied for the permit from the trustees to construct the, the bulkhead, as Mr. Ulysses said, and then backfilled behind that. And so I think what is now being discussed, and unrelated to the land swap that we're plowing for right now, is legalizing the, effectively the backfilling of the seawall, the addition of the stairs, and effectively the restoration now of the slope, which is part of this conservation easement, which was disturbed, and now needs to be revegetated and restored to a natural state. So we've already discussed this with Mr. Angelo, we are aware of the fact that an application to the environmental conservation board needs to be made for approval of that restoration plan. That is the only other application that we were going to be making, to my knowledge, but if, if we're now being told we need to go back to the trustees for something, you know, we were already aware of the fact that another application was going to be made in conjunction with, with this property specifically, not involving twenty-eight, but just specific to thirty-two.
Does the easement preclude the erection of stairs, the stairs, the structures?
So, yeah, it actually says, "Any structures." It does not specify whether or not stairs, which are customary in this particular area too, and were built, I'll be honest, immediately upon the construction of the two residences on the property.
Without a permit.
Right, well, that, that wall is twelve feet tall, so the stairs were, were effectively a necessity at that point. But yes, we, I believe we need to modify the covenant on the property to allow for those stairs to be there since they would constitute a structure, as the town defines it anyway.
Correct. So that's why I'm bringing your attention to that, because they're here. They also had to present to conservation board what's, with a conservation management plan, which was subsequently denied by the conservation board, but have not returned back to mitigate some of the fill, well, one thousand two hundred fifty cubic yards of fill that needs to be mitigated. And it's part of the conservation, the conservation easements, the language of the easement states that any deposit of outside fill needs to be mitigated via a conservation management plan. That plan was once again denied, but they haven't been back since to submit an, an acceptable plan, the conservation board can accept.
But does the whole proof have to be amended?
So again, so that's another recommendation, that the covenant would have to be amended to include at least these structures, the stairwell, which I agree is necessary, because it's a pretty, went to the site, it's a pretty long fall, if you're even trying to access the beach at all.
Is it an easement or a covenant?
It's an easement. It's an easement. It's an easement, yes.
So isn't there an alienation issue?
I haven't seen it.
She hasn't seen it, council, our council has not seen it.
Jeff, do you have any photos of the ground, ground level photos of that?
I do, but of course.
Imagine, you know, twelve foot, twelve foot high seawalls sticking up in the air.
Let me see.
So I also, can I ask you if you've initiated any kind of cooperation between the trustees or communication between the trustees and the conservation board and you, the attorney?
We have not started that process yet, no.
Okay.
So, I mean, today we're considering lot line modification and we, given these open issues, really couldn't approve that.
That's kind of where I was going.
No.
Well, I, sorry, I didn't quite hear the comment from council, would you mind repeating it?
Council has not seen the easements.
The easement.
Oh, I see.
So she would need to have those, have they been provided, Jeff?
No, I had to locate it myself, but I'll forward over to council so she'll have it for review.
Well, I just, I just, if I could, if I may, I would just like to kind of focus the conversation, because we are talking about one property, but we are talking about two separate issues. So the, the restoration of the bluff is kind of unrelated to the land swap that we're talking about, which pertains solely to the driveway, giving access to Bay Road. So, you know, inasmuch as they're two separate issues, the resolution for the board, which I saw today, does have as part of the conditions of approval that the application to restore the bluff will be made, and that the easement will be modified or the covenant will be modified to legalize the stairs. So I would hope that the board is comfortable moving forward, approving this portion of the application, because the conditions of approval contemplate that we're going to make further applications to respect the bluff.
No.
I'm not sure that we would do that at all.
Well, I put it in.
It's near, near ready for any kind of approval or consideration, because there are so many open-ended issues.
Yeah, all these issues have to be cleared out.
Yeah, we got, our council has to review the easements. You have to be able to have a communication between the trustees.
When, when they're.
This is not an, it's not isolated.
Conservation easement next to the driveway, or are we still talking about the bluff? Because I thought we did submit a copy of the easement that is adjacent to the driveway.
No, the bluff.
No.
It's one property, we can't segment the review, there are issues, outstanding issues, non-conforming structures, violations, they all have to be addressed as part of the application. We can't say, I'll go ahead with the swap and we'll deal with this stuff in another, in another time.
Right, but I don't think we'll be back before this board for anything to do with the bluff restoration, that would be going to the environmental conservation.
We don't know, we, I mean.
When that's finished, you can come back to us, is what we're saying.
You mean for, for approval for the, for the lot modification?
Correct.
Yeah, so I think everything has to be brought into conformance with your applicants before we're going to look at a lot line modification. So procedurally, you know, this is a bit premature.
And we, this is normal for us when we, when we see other issues as part of an application, they all have to be resolved.
So, Jeff?
What's that mean, if the trustees are in conservation?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, actually, let's see. You're not currently before a conservation board currently, you don't have any applications before the conservation board?
No, the application has not been filed.
So do we just deny it today and then?
Well, no action.
Or no, or there is a deadline.
I would rather not restart the process, we did go through a hearing and review, so if we can remove it from the agenda and then restore it at a later date, I mean, is that a possibility?
Yeah. We would have no action on it today.
Right, because the way I drafted it, I made it a condition of approval, but obviously at the board's discretion, for comfortable doing so. All right, so moving forward, I'll get you a copy of the easement.
Has he provided you with any of these easements?
There's a common driveway easement, but it's not pertaining to the grant of conservation easement.
We would need to look at all of these easements.
Right.
If you could provide those, that would be helpful, and then we could at least get council to be reviewing them. Okay, so we're just, we're going to, no action on this, okay?
Somehow the computer stuck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we're moving on to number.
Seven, six fifty-six and six sixty-four Montauk Highway.
This, I'm just distributing out the amended staff report. This is for the mixed-use structure next to the Village Green in East Quad that we spoke about with the moderate apartment and also market rate apartments.
And the ice cream shop.
And the ice cream shop and end market.
Special exception with a lot of stuff.
There's also another application, if you call, call Blessed Field.
Blessed Field's like the riverhead building, I was like.
No, this one's called, this was called Serenity Field, so. Yeah, we already obtained.
An extension?
So we, what we're going to do is prove an extension for October twenty-eighth, I was going to say, September twenty-eighth?
September twenty-eighth?
Yep.
Motion.
Okay, an extension, motion by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor, opposed, extension. Okay, an extension, motion by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor, opposed, extensions, and you passed out the.
Just for distribution.
Okay, so I'm not sure what happened, but the computer froze.
What happened, the computer went away?
Computer froze, and I can't pull anything up.
Back to paper.
Ever give it up?
So, yeah, the next worst item is.
Ransom.
I'm waiting for that.
Yeah. What number is that?
Eleven.
Eleven, vintage vine?
This has to be a revege vine, right?
Yeah, that's a revege.
Everything in vintage vine has been.
That's what hap, that's what happens when you have open space and lots of stuff on little lots.
Yeah. Big houses on little lots in the APOD. Extremely, extremely. Number eleven, Vintage Vines Lot Twelve, they're requesting to restore thirty-five percent of overcleared natural vegetation. Vintage vines, I'm sure you, again, you, the board should be familiar with that one. Yet, oh, here we go.
Do you have an aerial?
Maybe you came back up. Maybe not. Try it this way. Number eighty.
Claire, we're going to be discussing the, okay.
Here.
Don't have an aerial, but I do have the revege plan. Zoom in here.
We just have two more.
Okay.
Site disturbances.
So as you remember, as I, I stated, they're requesting to restore thirty-five percent of overcleared natural vegetation. A lot size here is thirty-two, thirty thousand one hundred and forty-six square feet, which is the bulk area of a flag lot, which they're trying to bring the property back in compliance, which permits fifty percent allowable clearing, which is sixteen thousand seventy-three square feet. So this is a pretty substantial amount of revege here. I spoke to the applicant numerous times to remove some ornamental plantings, as well as structures that were in areas that were deemed to be not cleared. Then we worked on the actual plant list, which you can see here. This, again, this property is located in Pitch Pine Oak Forest, so the choices of native vegetation do mimic that. And we did iron out the number and quantities needed to bring the property into compliance. So I'm recommending approval of this revege application. Wish I could find an aerial for you. I can't bring anything up. Yeah. Try this one last time.
Make your reason retrograde.
Yeah, nothing's working. Oh, here we go.
Traffic and computers.
Got it. Here we go. So this is part of a new construction? They are still building up the last few lots in this subdivision. As you noticed from the aerial, clearing has been a consistent issue, unfortunately. I recommend that the applicant restore as much of the property that borders this protected area here to the, to the west, which they are proposing, as well as for the reve, revegetation plan. And it should bring everything back into compliance, so for your consideration.
What do we do with the rest of them? Are they all in for site disturbances?
If you look at the.
Are they all filed?
Virtually everyone has been in. The contractors saying they didn't have any space for building.
I mean, these are, these are files from every single one of those different ones, so.
Do you have them?
Yeah, it is.
We, we got a lot of, a lot of good open space, and they squished the lots together.
So, I mean, given like the enormity outside of this particular one, I mean, do we like increase calipers and things like that for this restoration plans? I mean, this is a serious violation, there should be some significant consequence for that.
Oh, the, the, the amount of revege here is substantial, and I agree. Generally speaking, we have the applicant pay a double fee. Our normal fees are sixteen hundred dollars, so they have to pay three, three thousand two hundred dollars, which is never an easy conversation, on top of the cost of revege itself. Unfortunately, this particular subdivision is just accustomed to doing reveges. So unless they somewhat budgeted or had expectations that they were going to do a revege again, it makes it more difficult for us to have some level of enforcement, unfortunately, maintain some of this natural vegetation on the property.
What can we increase the caliper of trees that are going to go back in?
We can rest it. We have a plant specification sheet that does stipulate the caliper sizes, acceptable caliper sizes. Our, most applicants usually stay within those restrictions or specifications. The more mature the tree is, obviously, the more expensive it is. And depending, you know, revege this size and the scope, you know, it would be quite expensive for the applicant. But at this point, what do we do, right? Right, no, I agree. I agree, a hundred percent, I agree.
So you said it was all done by the same developer?
Uh, yeah. This is all the same subdivision.
We should alert the licensing review board. That he has.
So there is, there is a little difference when it comes to that. New construction does not require a home improvement license, so he can actually build this without any town license. Now, he does, it does require a state license or a county license, so maybe, you know, reporting it to some county, but.
But this should go back to when they're filing for a bill improvement, and they do this, the survey for the bill improvement should show a limit of clearing that is, that's in compliance with this.
It does.
And that's what triggers these applications to our board.
Simple solution?
That's what he does, yes.
So I'm saying like, increase the, is it within our legal bounds to say the enormity of this violation is requiring a significantly more restrictive clearing, or, sorry, a more restrictive or expansive revegetation plan? We're going to double the caliper requirement for everything.
I don't know either.
What about a maintenance bond? Do we take a maintenance bond?
Well, we said, we had a similar situation, and it was not in the best interest to impose a maintenance bond because the town would have to go out and essentially plant it if they don't do it, right?
Do it, yeah.
And the town's, I, I don't think the town would be in the business of doing that.
The way they handle the wetlands is they require the hay bales and, and limiting barrier, and that has to be up to the duration of job. What, in the APOD, you should have to put the clear, you, first of all, show it on your, on the, on your survey.
Absolutely.
And then put one of the, you've seen those plastic orange fences?
Yep, steel fence and.
Put the fences up, and that fence stays up for the duration of the job. The fence comes down, stop work order.
Yeah, and I think the, the biggest issue with these is the enforcement.
Yeah.
Cause they do.
That fence, just like we do, we, you know, do the split rail fence so people don't encroach.
Yep.
That fence stays up for the duration of the job. They, the, each job needs five or six inspections.
Yep.
So the town is constantly going back, back and forth there. The fence is down, boop, job stops.
That's the weak one. That's the weak one. We had several of these where the fences were knocked down, and contractors, we have the contractors here. You know, they, we gave testimony here, and they said, you know, that the sites are so tight that they are just, they can't, when they move around their equipment, they're just destroying the vegetation.
And what, and part of, part of the problem I see is that when we have a, a large development like this, we felt, we want to save as much of the natural vegetation, so we cluster on smaller lots, so we get all this big open space, which is incredibly valuable. But by doing that, what builders want to build today are McMansions. So, so they're going to the absolute ends of their building envelope. Therefore, when they're trying to put in septic and other stuff, they wind up clearing everything because it's impossible to truly build something that big in this little box without making mess.
Or you combine lots and, and bigger lots. They wanted these lots.
They, they. Well, we wanted the open space.
We want, I mean, I think.
We wanted the open space, but they wanted their yield, you know, they were, they, we did this math.
But we compromised by allowing smaller lots.
Yeah.
In order to get open space, and that's very valuable.
Yeah, so when you have small lots, you have to build small houses.
But they're not, because nobody, nobody wants to, nobody wants to buy a small house.
That's on them then. Then, then combine two lots and build a mansion on a bigger lot.
Okay, we're not going to solve, we're not going to solve.
This is a, this is a long range question. I like this, this is good, this is part of the things.
We're getting into, yeah, we're adding right into it.
Uh, so, I'm not sure if the board would like to move forward.
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah, we have to.
Uh, so this is for your consideration for approval of this revege plan. I mean, the revege plan does meet the requirements, they are definitely restoring a lot of the areas that they're essentially overclearing. But if the board would like more.
Yep.
What's the timeframe for revege?
Uh, so generally, the approval is good for a total of eighteen months.
Well, they don't get their CO vote, right?
Uh, right, exactly.
That's, that's a timeframe.
Absolure.
These guys have a million and a half dollars sitting there, they can't collect.
For sure. But I specify eighteen months because we've had in some occasions where they complete construction, but never come back to us, and when they finally try to obtain their CO, that eighteen month period is gone. And they'd have to resubmit and get a new reappraisal.
Well, that was a new addition that we put into the, to the revege legislation.
Right, so they'd be hit with another thirty-two hundred dollars, unfortunately, but.
Well, that's nothing.
That would be part of the process.
It's a dinner out of Bobby Dan.
Exactly. So do, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Vintage Vine, motion by Craig. Second, second by George, all in favor. Opposed, abstentions, seven in favor for number eleven. Number twelve?
Number twelve, Levin Butcher.
Levin Butcher Lane in Noyak.
Levin Butcher, this is definitely less substantial. The applicant also has an application before the building department for a pool, which triggered the overclearing on their property. They're looking to restore four point seven percent of natural vegetation on a ten thousand two hundred and forty-seven square foot property. And they are permitted to clear seventy-five percent, which would bring them to seven thousand six hundred and eighty-five square feet of allowable clearing. So after doing the math, that brings you to four hundred and seventy-seven square feet of overclearing. So clearly not as substantial. The applicant is proposing to replant this area to the north, as well as to the front of the property. They have essentially already implemented the revege, and we're unfamiliar with our process. But they, one had made an application, I met them on site, I'll bring it up for you. Again, similar ecology here, Pitch Pine Oak Forest. A lot of the revege, again, was done prior to. There's definitely a substantial amount of canopy. Looks like mostly the understorey was moss or just, or lawn. So along the south side, as I mentioned, along the north side of the property and the front, the front-facing portion of the property, which would be the east side, they are reveging both low bush blueberries, some black health berries, bayberries, some sage, and some scrub oak. So they're going above and beyond the permitted, or the overcleared amount, four hundred and seventy-seven square feet. They are actually reveging about two thousand five hundred and sixty-two square feet.
Okay, any questions?
Nope.
Motion to approve, motion by Dennis, second by Craig, all in favor. Opposed, abstentions, seven in favor. And that's it for you, Jeff?
So can I make one last comment?
Yes, please.
So for the board members that don't know, this is my last planning board. It was my last day, yeah.
What do we do?
Oh, you're in great hands, between Anthony and Claire and Al Teresa, you think you're amazing hands. This has been.
Not enough hands.
Where have you heard it, Jeff?
So my wife, historically speaking, I'm not from Long Island at all. When I married my wife, she grew up in Bridgehampton, I joined her here, I'm from Delaware. And she was here for a little bit too, and she went on, went to get her, she got her master's degree in HR management, or human resource management, worked for the company, and now she got an opportunity to be a director for a company outside of DC. So she asked, should I take it? And I said, you know what, I don't want to be the one to stop you, so go ahead and take it. So we're making that transition.
Well, good for her.
Good for her.
But did you have to go to, I mean, it's.
Zoom.
Well, to, to be honest, you know, our relationship after college, obviously, we, instead of Zoom, there wasn't a Zoom, there was actually Skype, Skype. We did a lot of that in between the time, but no, at this point, I'm sure she's happy.
So we're going, now we're even living, do you know?
So likelihood is going to be outside of Maryland. She's out there now, and I'm here, logistically, kind of trying to get the moving process together. So we're going to be living, I think, east of DC. I believe it's like a fifteen, fifteen minute ride to the, to the city, and around fifteen minute drive too, depending on what you want.
Don't get involved in that traffic around DC.
I mean, the public transportation is fabulous into DC.
It is. Yeah, that's what we've experienced. We kind of wanted to limit the amount of, you know, moving around. We have two small little boys, so we want to be, you know, home as much as possible.
Yeah.
So we wanted that balance, but hopefully it brings it, but sad to go. I know my journey here just started.
Jeff, we've appreciated.
We really appreciate it.
I appreciate the board too, learned a lot from everyone.
Learned a lot from you too.
I appreciate it, and hopefully I can take that and bring it to the next.
Cause you've shepherded all these revege plans, and as you remember, we've made a request that these be turned over to administrative review to get them off our agendas.
Exactly.
And so.
That's cause you organized them so that they could be done that way.
Exactly, exactly.
So that will, that's, but we will miss you for sure.
I'll be with you tonight, so I'm not going yet. So we'll make sure tonight's.
He's doing one last meeting for me. Too far, you have to see me at night meetings. Oh my gosh.
So again, I appreciate you guys, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Good luck, good luck.
All your work, we appreciate it.
Alright.
Thanks.
Are we still on session or are we adjourned?
We're adjourned here.
We can adjourn and talk to you about.
Yeah, we can talk a bit off, off record.
Motion to adjourn by Dennis.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
We have to talk on open, or we want to.
That's why we need her.
We still have a board meeting going on.
Tell us how to get rid of an easement though.
So we're not, we are not closing, we're not adjourning, we're going to have a discussion about clearing.
Well, actually, let's, we'll just say, and it should be just a two-minute conversation, is that we'd like to put on the agenda.
With the town board.
With, well, it would be with long-range planning, so Teresa and I'll be present too. Because sometimes issues might be not just long-range, you know. So gets your thinking caps on, we had a couple of issues today, I think, that you'd want to talk to the town board about or relay to the town board, and Janice then can take those issues. You tell us your priorities, what's most important, because obviously they're busy too. But what's first, and maybe it is, revege administration, do that, lighten your load or something like that.
But we already, but Janice has already started this process. You already have a bunch of points that are important, particularly with APOD. The Aqua for Protection Overlay District, I believe, one of the town council people some time ago, when he was new to the board, submitted legislation to increase or decrease the amount that you could clear in an APOD thing. In other words, leave it more, what is it, a maximum of thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent?
It depends upon the, the size of the lot.
Depends on where it is, and the, many people came to that public hearing for the town board and balked. You know, they didn't want to be told, and it was withdrawn. So, but APOD is a critical thing for us, for water quality and for clearing, clearing restrictions. So certainly, but I think we talked about it with Janice, but that, for me, that would be number one on the list. To revisit APOD. To revisit APOD and there's, there's, there's some verbiage there. It was all, it was all spelled out. I think it was Councilman Scavoni who presented it.
Yeah, but you have to be careful. APOD didn't come out of a, you know, vacuum. It came out of a study. Like a really involved, multi-year study. And if you're thinking about changing the percentages, you need to reopen that study.
Yes.
And take another hard look.
Fine.
Because everything should be based, something mapped townwide should be based on a certain.
Well, and it also should be based and linked to water supply. The use of groundwater that's, you know, extensive.
I'm, I'm gonna expand that though. It's trees in general.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Because we've, I mean, there, there are national studies right now that talk about heat zones. And places where there are more trees, the temperature is cooler than some places with more tree, with less trees.
That's what I had just said a little while ago, yeah.
Yeah, but so there's, I, while, in that case, I, I don't know that we actually have to do our own study. I think there's an awful lot of stuff already been published.
Sure.
Um, especially with this, this horrible heat we've had this summer. And they've been able to show, like in Texas, where there, where there's more, more trees, just in neighborhoods, it's cooler than.
Right, drops the temperature, creates shade. So we need to look at plantings, street trees more. We need to look at plantings in parking lots. They are like ovens, the parking lots.
They sure are.
All that mechaton is reflected.
We have a requirement of her quite loud.
Every twenty.
Five square feet.
It's not enough.
But I, I think we, we have information nationally that could help us.
Yes, sure.
Adjust the, the codes.
Right.
The codes, but then even discussions, you could start to have policies.
Yeah.
About site lands.
I think part of it is looking at the places where we have clearing limits and perhaps expanding that to, you know, whatever.
Well, that's the, the.
If you don't have them, but what about increasing penalties for people that violate? You know, where we already have them and they're just pre-clearing and then coming to see us.
They, they, the, the, what we charge when somebody does something wrong is so miniscule in the scheme of the value of the property in the house that it's not even, it misses, it doesn't even get to the rounding of the amount for the cost.
Sixteen hundred or thirty-two hundred is probably the electric bill for the.
They have to revest though. They can't just pay the fine, they have to.
Oh, I know that, but, but that, I, I don't think that's a, a financial hardship for the majority of the homes we're talking about.
No, it's not about financial hardship. The revegetation is what's, what's the envi, is the environmental goal.
Oh, I did not disagreeing that. I'm just saying that if, for someone who is, is buying a several million dollar house, an extra five or six thousand dollars because they got the bigger house they wanted, but now I have to pay for trees. I don't think that, that's not.
Yeah, but it gets, the big things getting the revest.
I, I'm not.
But I think, I think in a, in a general goal, we'd probably prefer to have the natural vegetation remain.
Right.
And have it removed and then put back something else. It takes, that's what longer they get.
And I think my suggestion of the, of the project limiting fence.
Yeah, absolutely. We do this, we do that on site plan, right?
We do it in the wetlands, right?
And we do some site plan applications.
Yeah.
You know, you, you define a limit of clearing, you put a fence down.
And then you put the fence up and then that fence is like, it's a bright orange. We all, we all know what it looks like. And it's there for everyone to see, including inspectors that have to go in and out.
Well, maybe that doesn't come down until the CL is issued.
Well, they'll stop the job.
No, they, it's, cause they go inspect it, you know, foundation.
When we do subdivision, we should be putting those kind of conditions.
Yeah, so if they see the fence down, they issue a stop.
We should. We should put it on, on vintage five.
We should put those conditions in our, in our subdivision, you know, approvals.
Yeah, APOD. We should require project limiting, first, project limiting fence.
Sure.
For clearing.
Covenant. We can do a covenant.
But that we can do now. We don't need.
We don't need a code to do that. You can have it as a covenant.
Yeah, and you can cut and paste the, the wetlands language, cause it's all in the wetlands code, that, you know, project limiting and just cut and paste that and put it into our approvals. And be a covenant.
But on a bigger policy issue, you just said we can make policy, right?
Yes.
But policy, doesn't policy have to be hitched to code? We were just challenged earlier.
What?
When you're saying policy, they're not policy makers.
No, but like sustainability, right? You've taken it a step further to put some language in. We've, we've gone a step further and every, almost, almost every site plan now has a charging station.
Right.
That's your policy. It's a site plan. It has a charging station. That's not in the code, but that's practically speaking, you're finding that this should be the next step.
But those are recommendations versus requirements.
That's what I'm saying, but it's your, it's your policy to do that.
Right.
And you're recommending, and people are following those recommendations.
Right, yeah, which is good.
On the larger projects, we, we got secret, so we can roll that into secret.
Mm-hmm, but the smaller projects, you're asking for it and you're getting it.
Yeah.
So I have just a question mostly, I guess, for Dennis and Jackie that, like, the core issue of like the things that I was noticing today and over the time I've been here is like, what is the process for us to interface with the town board to say, hey, we're seeing a lot of this thing. We feel that the code needs to be changed.
It goes, it goes, it goes, it's John Bouvier. It goes through Janice. She's the one who, because I've spoken to her about that. I said, we have lots of suggestions for code changes. She's the one who, I said, I discussed it with Bouvier as well.
Right.
So the way that we've seen it is sometimes we bring it through Janice or we issued a resolution about this traffic study safety issue. What are the preferences or benefits of either way? And could we define an acceptable process with the staff, with us and with the town board where we feel like, okay, it's part of the record and things happen, right?
Well, it's gonna be part of the record, cause we're gonna, what the suggestion is to have probably Teresa, and I will be here too. Bill be your sounding board. You, she will take your notes. She will bring it to Janice. And then we can talk about, you know, the details of some things more closely. But if we, obviously, this has been a buildup, right? You have a bunch.
It's been a long time.
It's gonna be monthly. It's gonna be like the second Thursday of the month. We'll make it the second Thursday of the month. It'll be on the agenda. Sometimes you'll have two items, cause you've spawned it and sometimes you'll have none, but sometimes you'll have five. This time you'll have ten.
And some of these conversations are gonna require like an exact session, cause I can see already where some of them may have legal impacts. Like you guys are not zoning in on while you're doing this.
Mm-hmm, right.
And like, so for, you know, for certain areas, I'll, you know, just to say, if we're seeing a lot of applications in a certain area, when does it come to a point of saying, oh, how do we look at the cumulative impact of this, right? Like, how do we recommend that a cumulative impact will be considered through staff, through?
Well, you do that through CQ. You would do that normally through CQ.
What if it's a.
But if it's a type two.
But I think, I think maybe what Kate might be saying is, remember when I requested Claire from the planning department? How many lots we created in these subdivisions, whether they were two lot subdivisions or three or four? And they came back with a review.
Well, there was that East Quag study at one point that was like, oh, there's a lot of applications here, you know, what is the cumulative impact?
But in, but in general, you know, how many are we, how many units have been created through subdivision process in Hampton Bays? In Bridgehampton, all the way down the line, but that's a staff function.
That's your zoning code. It's a function of your zoning code.
And the zoning code.
If you start looking at that, you're, you're actually saying you wanna go back and revisit your zoning. Like those are, those are major land use planning investments.
Right.
The zoning code allows you to create so many lots and that's, that, that's, and when secret, when everything else. So, I mean, as much as we hate to see so many small lots being created, but if the zoning code allows you, then that's, that's a death.
And you've gotten a lot of less than you in your efforts as a board in terms of that development. You gotta, you gotta, you whittle down a lot of what would have been as a right density and brought that down with cluster plans and other things that you've done.
Right, but zoning code has been examined and changed over time based on scientific study of environmental impacts. The traffic we are all experiencing, housing availability, you know, like you make, the zoning code is a, a healthy hypothesis of what the community needs, right? And then you see what's actually happening and go back and say, wait a second, it's not what we thought was gonna happen.
But it's not politically popular to upzone. No politician is gonna do that.
But just so you know, not only that.
Doesn't mean we can't recommend it or say.
I don't know where these guys follow. The national, state are certainly national use, but the tide is going in the absolute opposite direction. And this is among progressive circles. Look at the codes in California where it's become, going on the state level, more density. And the state, with this talk about the state coming in and overriding our zoning code for the purposes of increasing more housing use.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's.
And it's been discussed. It's happening in California, so be careful.
But, but we are unique. I mean, all you have to do is look it up.
I agree.
And the South Fork is the South Fork. It's a unique appendage, you know? This glacial outwash that's gonna go back into the sea if we keep developing it. And so, I mean, we have said this, Dennis and I have been here a long time. And you talk about changing zoning, right, which is major. But upzoning is a politically, a political hot potato.
So is dam zoning.
What?
So is dam zoning.
Yes, yes, both.
The whole thing is, it's controversial, so that's why you want to effectuate things like that.
So maybe there are other ways around it, but certainly to get a baseline, which I think is something Kate is saying. How do we know, because every two, every twice a month, we come in and we're approving two lot subdivision, three lots of, four lots of. What, what is that adding up to? And who's getting the burden of it? Is it Hampton Bays? Is it Watermill? Is it East Quag? What?
Well, you guys can speak to the town, I mean, your residents here, right? These are effects of what the zoning codes are and they're thought through and they're there for a reason. Like anybody else, you have the, you are, your job as a board, your authority, is to effectuate what the legislators have put in place. If you have an issue with that, you can individually go talk to any of them and see whether or not there's any interest to pursue a different path or, you know, increase something or do whatever, whatever it is you think would be better.
I get it. I did do that. I did, I did do that with our liaison.
Okay.
And he strongly suggested that we work through Janice. I wanted to have a meeting with the town board.
You can talk to whoever you want and they can say to you whatever they want. That's up to you, what, you know.
These wealthy enclaves throughout the country, of which we are one, we are one of the wealthier enclaves, are ground zero bombarded, under attack from progressive circles, that we want our, we want our five acre zoning. I mean, it's.
Well, I think, I mean, the challenges we have is that we don't have any affordable housing, so we have that god awful trade parade.
Right.
And at the same time, we have limited water. So it's not like we can afford to just build on top of each other because we won't, will not have. First of all, it's too expensive to put in any, some kind of IA system for a lot of housing. And there is a limited amount of drinking water and when there's no drinking water, it doesn't matter how big your house is. You still can't live here.
I have, I had a copy of the nineteen seventy master plan that was given to me when I was first chair way back. I think I've given, given it to Janice. That master plan and all the development was based on available water supply.
Yes.
It was a nexus between development and water. And I, I think we're putting our heads in the sand when you read areas around the country that are running out of water.
Yeah.
Where foreign countries are buying water supply from, from aquifers. We, we need to be looking at that and which is why it's connected to vegetation, to maintaining soil, maintaining moisture. It's all a, a network of, of, an environmental network. So it's very difficult when we sit here and we hear of applicants who absolutely refuse, because we don't have an authority, to clear cut a property. I mean, it is more than frustrating, I think, for everybody on the board.
You know, to expand on that, you, water, right, with big, big homes, irrigation systems. You know, now we have the ability to mandate IA systems. I would love to see at some point, we have the ability to mandate, you know, catch basins.
Drain water.
Drain water for, for, you know, to use for your own irrigation.
Grain barrels.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, that's the type of thing that could save an awful lot of, you know, water usage.
There's a lot of, there is a lot of engineering already available and has been for a long time for low impact development. Utilizing runoff, plant, you know, to, to water plant as well, but I remember trying to do some of that when I was studying it fifteen years ago. But it's a lazy, it's a lazy, it's an easy thing to say, we're gonna put it into, into the sand and, and get rid of it that way, right? Because it works.
Yeah.
But, you know, you also take contaminants and, and the low impact development takes all those things out, right? Or help remove all that stuff and, but there's a, and I've found, even when I was studying it, there was a reluctance, maybe because of how easy it is to drain, to, to provide, you say, the reluctance to, for engineers and surveyors and architects to, to, to embrace that.
Yeah, you know, when Kyle was here, Kyle was innovative in, in many of his site.
And he and I had many discussions about this.
And he would specify rain gardens in the middle of a subdivision, which then provided water for whatever, whatever plantings there were. But it was a natural system.
Yeah.
We don't seem to have that now. I mean, I know it's an attention, it's attention to detail and we are short on staff and.
Getting shorter by the day.
No, we try, we try, I try to do that. I try to get them to do, you know, things like that.
Things like rain gardens and, yeah.
Maybe have, maybe talk to Tom Houghton and when he's reviewing things, he can, you know, think of some of those things, like draw his attention to that. Maybe he'll make that more his recommendations coming forward, so you guys can see where it works, doesn't work.
He's so overworked about Christine.
Everyone, I, we're very interested.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it seems like, you know, our workloads get bigger and bigger and bigger.
Yeah, more complicated.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know about stream, stream lines.
So also just so that you know briefly on another topic, Lewis Road is moving along. You've all been site visits. I went with Tom. We got a tour.
Recently?
The ponds are ready to be lined. They were, they're dug, they're, they're compacted, they're waiting for the lining. And they said that they would call us about a week in advance to go see that operation. Cause the minute they put the lining in, they have to put sand, they don't want deer to tear it up. Put sand in and then fill it up. So the site did seem like it was very well managed. What I wanted to ask Dennis, I couldn't remember, did we request that there be a site manager?
We did initially, yeah, but that never made it into the final.
Never did.
No.
Because staff, they don't have time to go.
Yeah.
So who's going?
No, with Tom, Tom, Tom engineering was so.
Tom Houghton is somewhere there.
All right, he's one person. I'm talking about.
DEC also had somebody that was designated to go there. There were people that were watching the entire time.
I thought we got that into, I thought we got the fact that we.
No. I mean, we were talking about having an onsite, having them pay for an onsite, um, site manager that was interacting with the town.
I thought we were gonna hire somebody. Just person, manager.
I thought they said they, one of our consultants was coming out and checking. I can't remember who.
And then there was the, the clearing, the clearing, there was a consultant. The DEC is, was monitoring the clearing at the time.
Right.
And then we'll, again, when there's the second set of clearing, this.
But it's all, it's all piecemeal.
Piecemeal.
And, and I couldn't remember, but I thought for sure, it didn't make it.
It never made it into the final. It was just, it was talked about, we were discussing it and never made it in.
Yeah.
But Tom is on it. He's been out there, wow, lots, yeah.
He goes out, but he specifically looks at engineer. He doesn't look at trees being marked or.
Oh, he's, looks at that too.
He does.
He is very good.
He is very, he is.
Very thorough and he will just say, by the way, is this correct on the site plan all of the time? He's always checking for us.
Well, that's good to know.
Yeah.
But I, I didn't think I was crazy in remembering that conversation, but it never happened.
It is, no, that never made it in.
Okay, so I've got some ideas. I'll bring this list for the next time, but we'll put it on for, in our discussion room at the end of the next meeting.
Does Janice wanna talk to us about?
Um, she did, you know, we'll start, we'll talk at the staff meeting one day.
We'll talk at staff meeting too.
And see if she's available. And she can set the tone for the first one with your comments.
I'd like to throw two more words onto that list.
Okay.
Probably get me thrown off the planning board by the town board, which is impact fees.
I thought it was gonna be Traffic Circle.
Required, oh, that too. State legisl.
It's state legislation.
It's New York State legislation.
Connecticut and New Jersey do it.
New York State doesn't.
A lot, a lot of states do it.
Impact fees.
What is that?
Pays for the traffic approvals.
If you're building something, right, say a large subdivision, and you're tearing up the roads that are going into, there's an impact fee outside your development.
To fix, to fix the roads, because you, okay.
Yeah.
Claire, my, my two words are energy overlay.
Been told it's state legislation required.
Energy overlay?
Oh, that's a good idea. That's a good point.
I'm not letting you, you guys two words.
Was that overlay district?
I, I would love for us to have an energy overlay, so we stop reacting to what applicants and P S E G wants to bring us. And we stay with, we have a poll strategy. Where see, we have designated the specific areas where we think it's appropriate to have possibly best storage.
Yeah, okay.
And if you want to be our partner, it's incumbent upon you to provide the connectivity. But you already have a willing partner here, because we have X, Y, and Z available.
Good, good point. And I wanted to ask Claire a question on the moratorium. Who, is there a moratorium committee? Is there a group of people who are revising the legislation?
Is the scope of work being drafted?
So there's a reason I hide my head in the sand.
I'm sure all that is going on at staff level.
So this is a Janice, this is Janice thing.
Yeah, we did ask to be involved in drafting this couple of work.
Absolutely. And that was, I remember that resolution. I was part of that resolution. But yes, is there a committee? Let me ask. We'll find out for Monday.
Because the clock's ticking. Yep. Six months, it's gonna be, it goes like that.
It's been what, four weeks now? Six weeks?
Probably, yeah.
Great. Okay, good, thank you.
I signed the second page.
Second page?
Yeah.
I said there was maybe four pages. I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up for you.
You, you said there's a second page. That's all I heard.
No, several. I think I said several.
Board here has fun holding up.
Let me see how many there are.
How's the fun? How's the fun? You have a full board here.
You want twenty dollars?
There's a third and a fourth.
Are we still in session?
We're ready. Take it now.
We all date recent-
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Dennis, second by Craig, all in favor.
What's adjourned?
Opposed, we are adjourned.
Oh, oh yes. Oh my gosh, it's a miracle.